I want to thank you all for joining us again. This is the October 22 public hearing of the Seattle City Council Select Budget Committee. The meeting will come to order. I'm Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Select Budget Committee. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Drouse.
Present.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Herbold. Juarez.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Morales. Peterson.
Here.
Sawant.
Here.
Teresa Mosqueta.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you so much. And when Councilmember Herbold joins us, I'll make sure to welcome her for the record. I want to thank all of you for joining the Select Budget Committee Public Hearing today. As you know from the agenda, this is a full time slot just dedicated to hearing from members of the public, and that is what is on our agenda today. If there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Thank you again for all of the folks who have signed up to provide public testimony. We have about 220 people signed up for public testimony today, and it is our goal to make sure that we hear from every single person. We're going to go ahead and open up the remote public hearing on today's 2021 General Revenue Source Agenda, including hearing from any members of the public on property tax levy increases, the mayor's proposed budget, the 2021-2022 capital improvement program items. You are welcome to speak to any items that relate to our budget. And I want to thank you all again, as we do at the beginning of every meeting, for your patience as we endeavor to make sure that this remote public testimony opportunity is made available to all of you and it is accessible as well. We are going to continue to try to make sure that we get everyone heard. And in order to do so, I'll be conducting public testimony tonight in the following manner. Due to the high level of people, the high volume of people signed up to testify tonight, each speaker will be given one minute to provide public testimony. I'm going to call on the order in which people are listed, including folks who are calling from numbers outside of the city limits. We do want to hear from you, as we know that workers are coming in and out of our city as well, and we want to hear what your priorities are. And I will also call those who are listed as not present to give you a chance to make sure that if you're listening in, you do call in. But please be prepared to be ready to speak when we get to your number. I'm going to call on your name. You will be given the chance to unmute yourself by pushing star six, and we will also unmute your line. Please remember to push star six and double check to make sure that your phone is also not on mute on your end with the normal devices that we have. It can be tricky to both hit star six and double check to make sure you're not muted. Thanks for doing that in advance of your name and number coming up. Speakers are going to hear a chime at 10 seconds towards the end of their allotted time to speak. That's your cue to wrap it up. But tonight, we're going to give a little extra time, 15 seconds to wrap it up. So just note, we do want you to provide your closing comments so that you're not left without those last few words said. So please do make a note of that and aim for a one-minute total, though. Once you have finished speaking, please do hang up your phone and call in, listen into the, call into the Listen In line, or you can listen in on all of the other options listed on the agenda today, including at Seattle Channel. Please note that if you have not been able to stay on the line for your allotted time, we are absolutely interested in still hearing from you. Please email us at council@seattle.gov. We will make sure that that information gets circulated around to every council member automatically when you email that way. You can also email my office, teresa.mosqueta@seattle.gov, and we will distribute it. I also want to announce that we are going to make sure folks know where we are at in the list of public commenters. About every 15 minutes, I will announce what number we are on and make sure that people know where we're at in the rotation. At about an hour and 15, hour and 30 minutes into the presentation, I'm going to pause for a quick second to allow for our amazing central staff, Clerk's Office, and Communications Team, our IT Team, to have a quick break. We know that people, especially in the Clerk's Office, are need to do a shift rotation. So please note that about an hour and a half into the hearings, we will make sure that there's that short break so that people can rotate responsibilities. I am also going to announce for our colleagues on the line here, like we did last time, we did not take a break for dinner. So we are hoping to get through this by 10:00 PM. I understand if you are both listening and eating dinner while we are online, I appreciate your participation in this evening, so wanted to make sure you knew what the process was here. We will, though, however, have a, about a 10-minute break to make sure that people do have the appropriate time that they need for, I'm sorry, a 15-minute break so that people have the appropriate time that they need around 8:30 to take the state law breaks that we've been so proud of in this, in this state and in our city, to make sure that around 8:30, people have a 15-minute break. Okay? If there's no questions, let's go ahead and open it up. Thanks again for calling in. We are going to call people in the order they have been signed up to testify, and the first three people are Peter Shalito, Bill Simpson Sampson, and Ashling Cooney. Good evening, Peter.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Shalitoni, I use he/him pronouns. My district council member Alex Peterson has said that the only capacity in which he is willing to defund Seattle Police is through fixing what he calls the unjust, inflexible, and expensive police union contract. I agree, the contract is problematic, but I also encourage him and all of you to think logically about this. Broadly speaking, a reformed, cheaper contract is one that would pay officers less and hold them to higher standards of accountability. Officers want the opposite, so working for the SPD will become less desirable and attrition will increase further from its current rate. Losing officers is only problematic if we keep their scope of work the same. On the other hand, if we follow the lead of decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now and defund the department as a whole by transferring public safety responsibilities out of the SPD, then the number of officers needed would decrease to keep pace with the attrition. And in that case, no one loses. Councilmember Peterson, it is illogical to think that the union contract can be reformed without decreasing their scope of work. Black Lives Matter, we need to defund the SPD by 50% at least. I stand with King County Equity Now in supporting the solidarity budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening. Oh, excuse me, Bill, before you join, Councilmember Herbold, I'm not sure if I welcomed you. I saw you come online right after we started, so you've been here this whole time. Thank you for joining us. Just want to make sure I noted that for the record. Bill, good evening. Hey, Bill, I could hear you for a quick second, and then you went back on mute. Oh, there you are.
Okay, oh, I'm on mute now. Okay, hi, my name is Bill Sampson, and I'm a resident in District Four. Today, I'm calling as a volunteer with the Sunrise Movement. I think now more than ever, we need to preserve vital public services and complete urgent projects that support local economies, cultural centers, and community well-being. There's a few projects in areas of South Seattle I'd like to talk about that are not in my district, but the Duamish Long House. It's very unsafe for pedestrians and visitors unless you park at the parking lot there. And at their parking lot, people are often asked to, you know, leave that parking lot for volunteers, facilitators, and people with accessibility needs. There's other parking lots nearby, but they're very dangerous for pedestrians. And another similar area is Rainier Avenue, like the area where Emerald City Fish and Chip are, it's very dangerous for pedestrians, so I think funding should be maintained for improving safety in these areas. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Ashling, good evening.
Hi, my name is Ashling Cooney. I'm a protester and a victim of police brutality. I support the solidarity budget. In the 2021 budget, we demand the defunding of SPD by at least 50% and reinvesting that money in black communities, participatory budgeting, don't let Durkens steal the jumpstart funding, focus on public services, including transit, parks, COVID relief, housing for all, and a Seattle Green New Deal. I support Sawant's proposed backing of Africa Town's affordable housing on Yassler. Finally, I support Sawant's call for an independent civilian oversight system with full control over SPD. The OPA, OIG, and CPC are ineffective. OPA ruled it was reasonable to punch the subject twice to stop them from striking officers with a water bottle. As a victim, the process is hostile and stacked against us. 10 out of 12 investigators are sworn officers who cycle back onto patrol, creating a huge conflict of interest. After I told my investigator about my brutal assault, she asked me if I would like to sit down with my abusers and talk it out in mediation. This is not accountability. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. The next three speakers are Tiffany McCoy, Barbara Finney, and Mara DG. Tiffany, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany McCoy. I'm the lead organizer for Real Change. I'm calling in support of funding to expand the Seattle Street Sync Program. Real Change has worked with an amazing team of architects and advocates, which joined together at the beginning of the pandemic to create the Street Sync. It is a simple, low-cost way to make hand washing accessible to anyone that needs it. It was a grassroots community solution to a public health crisis, so please fund it and help us expand this program citywide. We also at Real Change support Morales's expansion of the Purple Bag Program and the Hope Team. We also voice our support for Councilmember Sawant's bills to increase tiny homes, the purchase of a hotel, Tent City 3, and all services for Share Wheel. We need to immediately ramp up short-term housing to meet the need. We are already seeing the not-so-coaked business and neighborhood groups to ramp up sweeps, and we do not have enough shelter space for those living outside. Finally, we need to defund the police by at least 50% and redirect that money into housing and services. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Barbara, good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Hello, my name is Barbara Finney. I'm a homeowner, homeowner in District Five, a union delegate to MLK Labor Council, member of 350 Seattle, Seattle DSA, and I support the solidarity budget, and I'm a member of the Tax Amazon and People's Budget Movement. The People's Budget demands that you city council fund social, environmental, and city services by increasing the Amazon tax our movement fought for and won. Both the solidarity budget and the People's Budget are demanding that housing, restorative justice, and the Green New Deal, all things that working people need and marginalized communities need, be funded. Councilmember Sawant has put forward the proposal to increase the Amazon tax to fund these needs. Other council members, you need to sign on to People's Budget Advocates, defunding SPD by 50%. Defund SPD by 50%. Make business, big business pay by increasing the Amazon tax. Reject austerity. Fully fund libraries, parks, roads, human services, community centers by increasing the Amazon tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Mara, good evening. Thanks for being with us.
Hi, my name is Mara. I'm an attorney, a business owner, and a generational District One resident. So I think it's important to ground all of these really historic budget conversations in reality. The historic push to divest from SPD is black-led, it's black-centered, and it's based in both love and truth. So many folks calling in to speak with you today, the thousands of people in the street, the mass groups working in the background, are all mobilizing towards a future that honors black people. And this is also about truth. It's about acknowledging the very ugly past and present and the specific anti-blackness of your past decisions and making the right decisions moving forward. So here, there's a hopeful inflection point, that in love and truth, all of you will support the solidarity budget, calling on Lisa Herbold specifically to retain the SPD hiring freeze in 2021, and for everyone to allocate funding towards the K-Ro Project, which is a leading anti-identification effort in the Central District. Again, I support the solidarity budget, the equity solutions that they proposed, and really urge all of you to remember, all of this is rooted in love and truth. Thank you.
Thank you. And Amy Hightower will be followed by Sonia Ponath and Jimmy Hightower. Amy Tower, good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Amy. I work with the Tenants Union of Washington, and so I'm here representing the TU. I'm an education counselor and a tenant organizer, and I am a renter in District Four. We stand totally in solidarity with the solidarity budget. There's some amazing organizations that are, you know, black-led, and we desperately, desperately need to be redefining our priorities. We spend more on parking enforcement than we do civil rights enforcement or tenants' rights enforcement combined. And this is a huge issue, and we see it every day on our hotline. Renter households in Washington statewide could owe up to an over $1 billion in rent by the end of 2020. The rental assistance that we have is only a fraction of that. In order to address the coming eviction wave, we really need to be investing very, very strongly in more affordable housing, especially as black households are more likely to be evicted. So please, please, please pass all of the solidarity budget demands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sonia, good evening. Thanks for being with us. Hi there, Sonia.
Hi, I'm Sonia Ponath. I'm a mom of two high schoolers working in District Three, a member of Socialist Alternative and a member of the People's Budget Movement, which is also standing with the solidarity budget. Our movement is demanding that the city council stop the budget cuts, increase the Amazon tax for Movement One, and defund the police by at least $170 million or 50% as Councilmember Sawant proposed. I'm not personally struggling, but I'm very tired of all the taxes I pay, including bloated property taxes because of our regressive tax system here, and watching companies like Amazon and Boeing get handouts from our establishment politicians paying little to no federal taxes, where we have to fight so hard for the smallest increase to fund our important social services. But when we fight back, we win. We won the Amazon tax by building a fighting movement and through the incredible multiracial solidarity that exists in the working class. And we have seen that winning anything meaningful requires a struggle. Now we have a new and extremely important proposal from the African Town Land Trust to expand urgently needed community-owned affordable housing in the Central District. I urge councilmembers to support that amendment from Councilmember Sawant to enact this proposal to acquire the Cairo Center as 1601 UCS, the way to be developed into community-own, permanently affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy, good evening.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Hightower, a resident of District Five and calling to support the proposal of the behavioral health outreach workers in North Seattle, specifically Lake City. As the community letter sent to council this week attests, conditions in our city's park are becoming dire. Living across the street from Albert Davis Park and near Lake City Mini Park has been challenging these last several months, as both parks have substantial encampments that have been attracting significant illicit activity and putting already susceptible populations at greater risk. With a group of community members, we have proposed the creation of two Lake City Behavioral Health Outreach Specialist positions to help fill the gaps and provide services that SPD could not and to help folks obtain affordable housing and services while working in tandem with businesses and house neighbors to deescalate conflicts and provide resources to folks in crisis. I firmly believe that together, we can make positive change in our community through innovative approaches and better support our vulnerable neighbors and ensure safety for all of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. The next three speaker are Kelsey McGrath, Ellen Lab, I'm sorry, Ellen, you'll have to correct me, and then Spencer Rittering. Kelsey, good afternoon.
Hi there, I'm Kelsey McGrath from District Three, and I call on city council to defund SPD by 100% and support the solidarity budget. Ruth Wilson Gomor says abolition is about a presence, not absence, is about building life-affirming institutions. I fully support the demands of the solidarity budget because they are in alignment with its principle. First, I urge you to defund SPD by 100% and extend the hiring freeze in 2021. Second, invest this money from defunding SPD, not jumpstart, in black and indigenous communities using a participatory budgeting process. Next, fund dignified housing for all and decriminalize poverty to ensure people trying to meet basic needs or experiencing mental illness or substance use are not persecuted. To fourth degree New Deal and fund community identified priorities like the crosswalk for the Duamish Long House. Lastly, I support Councilmember Morales's two proposals for funding for culturally responsive curriculum and restorative justice programming. Black Lives Matter, Indigenous Lives Matter, abolish SPD, invest in liberation.
Thank you very much. Ellen, good evening.
Hi, I'm Ellie Labes from District Six in the Sunrise Movement. I'm calling in support of the solidarity budget. I'm a volunteer at Harborview, currently on COVID hiatus. Too many of the patients I visit are not only trying to heal, but also looking for a place to live after discharge. The services offered to them are incredibly difficult to navigate. My heart breaks every time someone asks, do you know when someone will call me back about my housing plan? We need to overcome these interlocking inequities by funding dignified emergency shelter, sanitation, and affordable housing. And in order to make these new systems accessible and just, we need to give leadership to the folks that know these experiences, specifically in the form of paid positions. These essential steps and more are included in the solidarity budget, a bold reversal of Mayor Durkens' harmful proposed budget. Councilmembers, let's build a Seattle without anti-black racism and with an equitable recovery from COVID and climate change. Divest from SPD and reallocate at least 100 million into black communities using participatory budgeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Spencer, good evening.
Hello. Hello, my name is Spencer Rittering, and I'm a homeowner in District Three. I'm a parent and a supporter of the solidarity budget. In my entire life, I have never required the police. I've given medical attention, animal control, a clerk to record a test, and I've required the fire department, but I've never needed someone with a weapon. I urge you to divest from the SPD by at least 50% and put those funds to better use by investing in black communities and community-led health and safety programs. I also urge you to expand the direct defense. We shouldn't be convicting people of crimes if they're trying to meet a basic need or struggling with mental health or drug use at a time of the offense. Finally, please reaffirm the vote you made in 2020 rebalancing package to eliminate the navigation team and instead find trusted community organizers and nonprofits to conduct outreach to encampments without the presence of the police. Black Lives Matter, Tax Amazon, thank you.
Thank you. And the next three speakers are Summer Stinson, Kitty Wu, and Paul Chapman. Good evening, Summer.
Hi, I'm Summer Stinson, a D6 homeowner and board member of the Economic Opportunity Institute. Now is the time for you to lead and to be on the right side of history. Budgets are moral documents. I strongly support the Seattle solidarity budget. To overcome our gaping economic and wealth abyss, systemic racism, and COVID-19, the Seattle City Council must pass a tax the rich and no cuts, other than defunding SPD by 50% budget for 2021. I urge the Seattle City Council to reallocate at least 50% of the funds from SPD and reinvest that money into black communities and towards community-led health and safety programs. Fully fund our parks, libraries, sidewalks, before and after-school programs, childcare options, and cultural programs and spaces. Invest much more in dignified emergency shelter, community-owned housing, affordable housing, and the Green New Deal. I urge you to vote for progressive new revenue options, including a city income tax and a capital gains tax as soon as possible. We are depending on you to lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Kitty, good evening.
Hi, this is Kitty Wu. I'm a concerned mother who lives and works in District Three. I'm the co-director at 206 Zulu, and I sit on the Seattle Music Commission and the Digital Equity and Youth and Communities Committees. I support a 2021 budget that protects our least protected and supports our least supported. We now know that 2,000 Seattle public schools families still need internet. Those families need devices. I support Internet For All Action Plan and dollars allocated to it. Digital navigators are a vital bridge between devices and internet that can help the babies to the grandies get reconnected. I support the solidarity budget, divesting from SPD by 50% and investing in lifelines and human and public services for marginalized people in a participatory budget process. More police does not equal more safety. Let's move away from criminalization of our people towards community-led solutions that help us and our neighbors thrive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul, good evening.
Hi, I'm Paul Chapman, a member of Welcoming Wallingford, Chair of the Cities and the 43rd Democrats. Thank you to councilmembers for listening to us. Seattle is facing an existential crisis for the soul of the city. Will we follow Mayor Durkens to a future plagued with fear and austerity? Or will we follow 158 community organizations and thousands of residents calling for a solidarity budget rooted in equity, justice, and generosity? We're one of the wealthiest cities in the country, so let's divest from SPD and their white supremacist violence. Let's decriminalize poverty. Let's invest in our neighbors suffering from our policy failures that cause homelessness. Invest in our black community. Invest in our native community. Invest in municipal broadband. Invest in four floors and corner stores. Invest in passive house affordable housing. Invest in more transit and bike lanes. Invest in a progressive tax code. In this historic inflection point, let's not build a future as stable as the West Seattle Bridge. Let's be bold and create in this moment the equitable city we need. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the analogy. The next three people are Doris O'Neill, Maureen Ewing, and Alan Balway. For folks reference, we're on numbers 17, 18, and 19, that would get us up to number 20. I do not see Doris O'Neill or Maureen Ewing present, so we will come back to them if they do join us. So let's go ahead and move to Alan. Good evening, Alan.
Good evening. I'm Alan. I'm a resident of District Seven, and I wanted to call in to voice my support for the solidarity budget, as well as a complete rejection of Mayor Durkens' racist and climate-denialist proposed budget. I want to highlight that we need to defund SPD by at least 50%, and we need to consider alternative options than building up more and more fossil fuel car infrastructure and invest in transit, as well as our indigenous community. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your testimony. And the next three speakers we have are Tushar Kunara, Carly Gary, and Castille Hightower. That would bring us up to numbers 22. Still don't see Doris or Maureen. I also do not see President Tushar and Carly. So we are going to go ahead to Castille. And Castille, thanks for joining us again tonight. Please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks so much.
By now, you should know my brother Herbert Hightower Jr. was killed by SPD in 2004 due to a mental health crisis, a 16-year-old public record to which we are still fighting to be released. By now, you should know the demands of the People's and Solidarity Budget, such as defunding SPD by 50%, creating community-owned affordable housing through Africa Town, fully funding schools, building community centers, providing good-paying, giving jobs, the Green New Deal, and implementing a democratically elected community oversight board with the power to hire, fire, and discipline officers which can prevent continued tragedies like my brother's, expand arrest rates in the diminutive ordinance, and so much more, will all take the burden of this pandemic off of the shoulders of working and poor people and force pandemic profiteers like Amazon to their crowdfunding and to pay their fair share. And now that you know, now that you heard the voices of the people impacted by your decision-making, demanding a fair share to life and liberty, it's time to put your promises to pin and show you stand with us and not against us. Thank you, I yield my time.
Very much. Thank you very much, Castille. The next three speakers are Emily Murphy, George Barron, and Akeisha Chatterings. Again, if you heard your name and were not present, calling on Doris, Maureen, Tushar, and Carly, we will come back to you if you do join us on the Listen In line. Until then, Emily, thanks so much for joining us again.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Emily Murphy. I'm a resident in D4. I was born and raised in D5, and I am a member of North Seattle for Black Lives, a network of neighborhood groups working to undo North Seattle's ongoing legacy of white supremacy and support the movement for black lives. We support the black-led community solidarity budget, including divest from SPD by at least 50%, participatory budgeting to distribute divestments from policing, preserve vital public services, increase dignified emergency shelter and affordable housing, and decriminalize homelessness services, implement Seattle's Green New Deal, and implement Seattle's Green New Deal, and curb the criminalization of poverty and mental health struggles. We call on the City Council to make sure that investments in black communities come from funds divested from police, not from Jump Start Seattle or any other city fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emily. George, Jorge, good evening.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueda, and council members. Thank you for your time today. My name is Jorge Ladan, and I serve as the Executive Director of Northwest Immigrant Rights Project and reside in District Seven. I am here to urge you to support Councilmember Gonzalez's amendment to maintain level funding for the Seattle King County Expanded Legal Defense Network, or ELDN, which is based out of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. As a resident of Seattle, I was proud to see our city create this program in 2017 to ensure that city residents and workers who are facing a deportation hearing would not have to face an immigration judge alone because they are not provided appointed counsel if they cannot afford one. We're disappointed that Mayor Durkin proposed a nearly 20% cut in funding to the program and her proposed budget from the current levels and are asking you to support the amendment to maintain level funding for 2021. I'm cognizant of the challenges the city faces in addressing the fiscal crisis caused by the pandemic, but I urge you to consider the challenges faced by the people ELDN serves. As we gather virtually this evening, there are hundreds of community members being held at the Northwest Attention Center in Tacoma, including Seattle residents or workers. Some of them will be facing deportation hearings as early as tomorrow morning, and if they can't afford to hire an attorney, they will have to face the prospect of being separated from their families or being sent to a place where they face harm without legal assistance. But some of them won't face that injustice because of ELDN, so I urge you to support fully funding this critical program. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jorge, and good to hear your voice. Sorry for the mispronunciation of your name as well at the beginning. Thanks for calling in. Akisha, good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Akiksha Chatterjee. I'm a renter in District Five, a student at the University of Washington, and a volunteer with 350 Seattle. I'm speaking today to ask that the City Council make the following necessary amendments to Mayor Durkin's 2021 budget proposal. First, I repeat what many have said and urge you to divest from the SPD by at least 50% and reinvest these funds in black and BIPOC communities and community-led health and safety systems. This is only the first step towards divesting from systems of oppression. Second, these funds must absolutely be allocated through a just and true participatory budget process, not a handpicked Mayor Durkin task force designed to silence community voices. Third, this money should come from the city's policing budget, certainly not from Jump Start Seattle funds needed to meet basic human needs. We must recognize that an investment in the community goes hand-in-hand with divestment in policing, without which we cannot create the changed Seattle for badly needs. I stand in solidarity with the people who have endured injustice for too long. The time to undo racist systems of oppression was yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Kelly, good evening. Hey, Kelly, it looks like you are on mute on our end. Just push star six one more time. And as Kelly is unmuting, I just want to note, we will go back to Maureen. Maureen, thanks for calling in. Kelly, any luck with unmuting? Just star six on your end. Okay. Why don't we go back to Maureen, and then we'll come back to Kelly. Kelly, if you can hear me, we'll come right back to you. Good evening, Maureen. Thanks for calling in.
Good evening, Council Chair Mosqueda and council members. Thank you for your leadership during this time and the opportunity to speak. I'm Maureen Ewing, the Executive Director of the University Height Center in the U District. And I am here tonight to wholeheartedly advocate for a proposed tiny house village in the U District. The U District is in great need of supportive services for unhoused neighbors and has long been home to a large population of unhoused youth. We see firsthand every day the disproportionate toll that the pandemic has had on our underserved communities, and we know that tiny house villages are a proven program to give folks the safety of locking a door at night, the dignity of hygiene services, and a pathway to housing. We know that 40 to 56% of tiny house residents eventually find their way into permanent housing with the support of case management. And we thank Councilmember Peterson for already identifying a great location at a sound transit site at Roosevelt and 45th. So please act now and find a tiny house village in the U District. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Good to hear from you again. And Kelly, we're going to go back to you. See if we can get you off mute. Star six. After Kelly is going to be Joe Scott, Justin Barr, and Katie Wilson. Kelly, I still see you muted on my end. And just a heads up to Joe Scott, it shows you as not present as well, so if you could dial in, we'll come back to you. Kelly, apologies for that. If you want to shoot our office a message and let us know if we can help troubleshoot, that'd be great. I know our team is standing by, as well as the tech team. From the email that you received, a message for the dial-in number after you logged in to sign up for public testimony today. So let us know if you can get back in, and we will come back to you if we can get you unmuted. I don't see Joe Scott listed, so let's go ahead to Justin Barr. Good evening, Justin. And just star six unmute. Perfect. Yes, now we can. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Justin. I'm a District Five renter, member of Socialist Alternative. I'm active in the People's Budget Movement and also support the Solidarity Budget. Tonight, I urge the Democrats on the City Council to join Councilmember Sawant in opposing Mayor Durkin's shameful austerity budget. You promised to defund SPD 50%, and then you betrayed the Black Lives Matter movement by not supporting Councilmember Sawant's concrete proposal to do this. Don't betray us again. If you do not accept the amendments from the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget, that means you approve a racist, anti-worker, anti-poor budget while the wealthy in our city have raked in massive profits during this campaign. We demand that you defund the police 50% and increase the Amazon Tax Movement One to fund a massive expansion of affordable housing by taxing the rich instead of workers and poor folks. The amendment from Afca Town and Councilmember Sawant to expand affordable housing in the Central District. And for those in the movement listening, we know we can't put our faith in these Democrats if these people are building mass pressure to make sure they accept our demands.
The next person is Katie Wilson. Hello, Katie. Thanks for joining us.
Hello, council members. Hey, this is Katie Wilson, representing the Transit Riders Union. We enthusiastically support the Solidarity Budget. In particular, I want to emphasize the importance of expanding duress language and the de minimis ordinance and extending the police hiring freeze through 2021. Along with the Mass Coalition, we support amendments to restore funding for sidewalk repair on Rainier Avenue, the Georgetown-to-South Park Trail, the Route 44 multimodal project, and also continuing planning bike connections in South Seattle. We ask that you restore the $30 million strategic investment fund to acquire land for community-driven development and anti-displacement projects. If we don't use these funds to acquire new public land for public use, then what the hell was the city doing last year when it decided to sell a massive piece of public land in South Lake Union? We also strongly support funding for Wills Low Barrier Women Shelter and shares indoor shelter network to remain open 24/7 and for self-managed tiny house villages and shares tent City Three. We support funding for Councilmember Morales's Hope Team Amendment and also for handwashing stations and additional trash pickup for encampment residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. The next three speakers are Natalie Livson, Gabrielle Guthere, and Marcy Bowers. Natalie, good evening.
Hi, my name is Natalie Livson. I'm a renter in Councilmember Peterson's District Four, and I support the demands of the Solidarity Budget, and I urge you to defund the Seattle Police Department by at least 50% and reinvest those funds in black communities. I also wholeheartedly support a participatory budgeting process to determine how the funds for health and safety are deployed. Finally, we are in a triple pandemic, COVID-19, of course, but also the climate crisis and systemic racism. We need to address all of these crises simultaneously. The $100 million promised by the mayor for black communities should not come at the expense of emergency COVID relief and Green New Deal investments. I urge you to divest from the police and invest in the health, safety, and future of all Seattle residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Gabrielle, you are next. Good evening.
Hi. Hi, my name is Gabby, and I'm a renter in the U District and also a graduate student at UW. I'm calling today in support of the Solidarity Budget. We need a budget that communities in Seattle actually support, and we need a budget that actually supports communities in Seattle. This means that in this budget cycle, we need to defund SPD by at least 50% and invest that money into black communities and community-led health and safety systems. And that money needs to be allocated by the community through a participatory budgeting process. Also, eight months into a global pandemic and coming out of the worst fire season in history, we can't be taking funding away from COVID-19 relief and the Seattle Green New Deal. Now, more than ever, we need to be increasing funding for these vital programs, not taking funding away. I urge you to legislate in support of all the solidarity demands and use this budget cycle to begin working towards a Seattle where everyone is safe, has a place to live, and can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. And next we will hear from Marcy Bowers. Marcy, after you. We're going to go back to Carly Gary, sorry, Carly Gray, Kelsey Nessbill, and then we'll hear from Laura Lo. Marcy, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marcy Bowers. I'm here tonight representing Solid Ground and Poverty Action. I'm here tonight to urge the council to do three important things. First, support the Solidarity Budget that ensures investments in black communities come from funds divested from police, not from Jump Start or other city funds. Second, support a $750,000 investment in rapid rehousing to support the housing needs of our city's residents in the wake of COVID-19. And finally, to include $85,000 in funding for the city's Human Services Department organizational advocacy contract. Poverty Action has held this contract for over 15 years, and it's been a successful partnership with the city doing anti-poverty policy advocacy and organizing. You rightfully heard plenty tonight about the Solidarity Budget, so I'll focus on the advocacy contract. This advocacy contract represents a modest investment from the city that brings a significant return to people in Seattle, especially people with low incomes. It brings direct cash assistance to the pockets of Seattle's residents and limits the need for city-funded services, and we urge your support on each of those three things. Thank you so much.
Great, Marcy. Thanks for your time tonight. We're going to hear Carly. Carly, good evening. I'm wondering if we got the mute button worked out on your end. It might be on our end, so please let us know. Oh, great. It looks like it came unmuted. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Carly Gray. I'm a resident of Andrew Lewis's District Seven. I'm also a member of Sunrise Movement Seattle and UAW 4121. I'm calling, like many other people tonight, in support of a solidarity budget that makes six key amendments to Mayor Durkin's budget. I first support the demand that you've heard in the streets and in countless City Council meetings to divest from the Seattle Police Department by at least 50%. Those funds should be distributed through a participatory budgeting process. Asset investments in black communities and in community-led health and safety solutions are funded through money divested from police, prosecutors, and courts, not by taking away money from Jump Start Seattle revenue or other city funds. I urge you to reject Mayor Durkin's tactics and refuse to pick community-identified priorities against community health and safety. Continue to fund projects like the Georgetown-to-South Park Trail, sidewalk repair along the Rainier Avenue corridor, and creation of a sidewalk for the Duhamne-Slong House. Fund essential services in Seattle and reject the austerity of Mayor Durkin. Five months of protests and organization should make our message more than clear by now. I urge you to support a solidarity budget for Seattle in 2021 and beyond. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in, Carly. And the next two are going to be Kelsey Nessbill and Joe Scott, and then we'll go back up to number 33, who was Laura Lo. Good evening, Kelly. Just star six unmute yourself. Okay, Kelly, if you can hear me, just star six. Oh, perfect. Great. Go ahead.
Sorry for that difficulty. This is Kelly Nessbill, and I'm in District Seven. And I need to get to my notes now after all that. Oh, my gosh. Hold on one second.
It's okay. We'll restart your time here. Go ahead, Kelly.
I know. I, I, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Kelly, Nessbill, District Seven, we support Mayor Durkin's budget. No to the solidarity budget. Please listen to Councilmember Peterson. Improve on this plan by requiring accountability. Every taxpayer dollar must be held to smart goals. You have a fiduciary responsibility to require this. No to defunding the police. Your actions have already caused 44 police to leave. No to legalizing misdemeanors. Your number-one responsibility is the safety of those who live here. No to providing loopholes to criminals. Use the rainy day fund as is necessary. Unprecedented economic downturn due to COVID and civil unrest is what the rainy day fund was meant for. Mask up, open up. Encourage Governor Inslee to open up to at least Phase Three. The very signs that caused Washington to close have now provided us a way to reopen. Address homeless as your number-one item. Reinstate the NAV team. Throw trash, human waste, needles, litter our parks, sidewalks, and storefronts. Rad in the stations, open drug use. Offer the shelters, social services, housing options with rules. Acceptance is required. Involuntary incarceration as appropriate. Our community cannot survive with this meth or tolerate criminal activity.
Thank you for calling in tonight, Kelly. Joe, good evening. Thanks for being with us. Just star six unmute yourself. Great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Scott. I am a renter in District Four of Seattle. I'm on this call today to speak in favor of the Solidarity Budget, specifically in favor of amending the mayor's budget to defund the police and invest in BIPOC communities. What brings me here is also a personal story. My bike was recently stolen from my house. When I found it being resold on Craigslist, I actually called the police to see what could be done. They told me essentially to set up my own sting. Best case, this officer told me. We show up and get the guy. Worst case, he attacks you. I realized, no matter what, involving the police would mean violence, potential harm to an officer and myself, and definite harm to the thief, all over a couple hundred dollars. So I want to affirm the truth that more and more people are realizing the police are a violent and ineffective force for creating public safety. If we want to promote safety, we must make Seattle economically just, and the solidarity budget would help steer us toward that horizon. I also want to give a shout out to the very first speaker on this call who called out Alex Peterson specifically for his illogical kind of nonsense statements on this issue. I support his statement. Thank you.
Laura, thanks for waiting. Laura Bernstein is going to be followed by Mira Garrawal and then Anna Marie Dooley. Laura, good to see you on the list again. Please go ahead.
Hi, council. I'm calling today just as myself to say a long list of wonderful things that we need to do. I wanted to also say that the unity that the Solidarity Budget has brought to the budget process is so inspiring and energizing, and it's good to have hope in these difficult and dark times. And I'm just wowed by the work of the folks that have led the protest for 150 days and then are leading on this budget process and really unifying all of us. Seattle for a Green New Deal, Sunrise Solidarity Budget, the Mercer Megablock Alliance, folks like B Seattle. And really happy to see things like the Hope Program from Councilmember Morales and really creative solutions that are coming from the community and that are being brought forth from elected. And it's just a really hopeful sign, and I hope that you feel that energy and are inspired to take bold action and not settle for a really awful Durkin budget. And thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you, Laura. And the next person is number 34. Mayor MEHR, I don't see you listed as present, so please go ahead and call in now, and we'll come back to you. Anna Marie, you are up next. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you. I'm Anna Marie Dooley. I'm a doctor and a member of Washington Physicians for Social Responsibility. Unlike the council members listening, I don't write budgets. Instead, I write prescriptions, and this year I've written too many. First for dialysis for those dying of COVID, then prescriptions for inhalers for many unable to breathe from the smoke, all linked to our climate crisis. You can't continue to write budgets in the way you have because the public health costs of our climate crisis are upon us now. Costs including chronic ill health, increased medication use, and days locked from work. Costs budget makers never measure because they fall in lower income in communities of color. So fund the Green New Deal by restoring staff positions in the offices, sustainability. Restore cuts to transportation, sidewalk, and biking. Restore cuts to transportation, sidewalk, and biking projects. I have to give people bad news every day. You must give large corporate groups the bad news that they have to pay more. While they may complain about revenues lost, I'm concerned about lives lost. Please put public health and solidarity before profit. Thank you.
Thank you Anne, thanks for everything you do on a daily basis during this time of COVID as well as a healthcare provider. Lauren, Lauren Hensley Butler, followed by Sean Smith and Amanda Sorrell. Sean, just a quick note, number 37, we have you listed as not present, so please call in now as well. Lauren, good evening. Thanks for being with us.
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks.
Okay, great. My name's Lauren Hensley Butler. I'm a D3 renter and I've worked in social services in Seattle for the past 10 years. I'm also calling as a protester to express my unequivocal support for defunding SPD by at least 50% in order to invest specifically in Black communities and in community solutions. I also want to add my support for the South Seattle Program that Councilmember Herbold spoke about that seeks to train new social service workers who have lived experiences accessing services themselves. Speaking as a person with a master's in social work, I know for sure that you do not need a social work degree to be effective. I want to be working alongside people with relevant lived experiences in this field. This is an important way to ensure that social services do not just reproduce existing systems of community.
Thank you for your time tonight. Sean, I still see you listed as not present, Sean Smith, so we'll come back to you if you dial in. Number 38, Amanda, good evening. Thanks for being with us.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks Amanda.
Hi, my name is Amanda Sorrell. I'm a renter in D4 and an organizer with 350 Seattle and I'm here today in support of the solidarity budget. One of our demands is that you defund SPD by 50% at least and reinvest those funds in Black communities through a participatory budgeting process. Mayor Durkin shouldn't be able to hide behind a self-appointed task force or promises of support that pit community needs against one another. Durkin promised $100 million to Black communities, which is a start, but that money should come from police, prosecutors, and court budgets and not from the Jump Start tax that thousands of us worked to make a reality. The funds from Jump Start were already dedicated to COVID-19 relief, affordable housing, and Green New Deal investments, all of which are vital. What isn't vital is SPD's continued violence and punishment of people who are trying to survive through these overlapping crises. With that money, you can work to meet people's basic needs and build other ways of responding to harm in our communities, which will result in the public safety the police claim to provide but do not. Vote for a budget that keeps us all safe and healthy and not just some of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Robin Briggs, Tyler Saxton, and Anita Pebbles. Robin, good evening.
Hi, this is Robin Briggs. I live on Capitol Hill. I urge the council to prioritize budget items that are addressing the climate emergency. We know that postponing action on climate will cause catastrophic damage. Therefore, I ask you to restore the funding for the OSCE add-backs. These planning positions are critical to being able to make forward progress on addressing climate change. Without them, we will lose as much as two years of progress because we won't be prepared when we do have more resources. Further, the Jump Start revenue should be directed according to the council's original spending plan, which included weatherization and building electrification as well as affordable housing. Lastly, I support the mass proposal. With COVID-19, the need for safe routes for walking and biking has grown tremendously. We have a road deficit that cannot be repaid at the expense of walkers and bikers and we should prioritize those projects in the South End where the need is greatest. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your time tonight. Saxton, sorry, Tyler Saxton, you are up next.
Good evening. Yeah, my name's Ty. I am a renter in District 3. And as others have already said, budget is a moral document. And so Mayor Durkin's budget is clearly immoral because it's an austerity budget that unnecessarily cuts too many of our essential public services right in the midst of multiple crises that we're facing. And austerity is only going to worsen these crises, so we have to reject austerity. And we need to pay for the vital investments that we need to address these crises by increasing and extending taxes on big businesses and the rich because they are the ones who have to pay for this crisis. Their exploitation of our regressive tax structure here in Seattle, London, and Washington has actually created this budget crisis by underfunding these essential public services for years and by concentrating absurd amounts of wealth in the hands of the ultra-rich where this wealth is really least likely to be spent in the public interest. So let's increase taxes on the rich and use that money to increase funding for affordable housing, parks, libraries, roads, community centers, emergency food programs, and a Green New Deal. Thanks.
Thank you for your time. Anita, good evening.
Hello, this is Reverend Anita Pebbles and I'm a resident of District 7. I'm the Associate Pastor at Seattle First Baptist Church in District 3. I'm calling to urge you to lead with courage in this historical moment and divest from SPD by at least 50% and support distribution of funds divested through a participatory budgeting process. I and others in my congregation are asking you to invest in Black communities and community-led health and safety with funds directly from divestment from SPD in a restorative gesture for justice and wellness. As a faithful leader, I urge you not to let community needs be pitted against each other but to see that systemic racism, housing for all, and climate justice are all the same fight and that another world is possible if you make the brave choices today to be leaders who take seriously the needs of those among us who live closest to the margins of society. Seattle First Baptist Church endorses King County Equity Now's Solidarity Budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for calling in tonight Reverend. The next three people are going to be Sean Smith, Rich Voget, and Daniel Lokic. Thanks Sean for dialing back in. If you can hear me, you are up next Sean.
Please hold, Councilmember.
Hi there.
Good evening, Stephen, City Council. My name is Sean Smith and I reside in Nicholsville Northlake Village. Nicholsville supports the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget. We oppose sweeps of any team that includes police or city workers going out to encampments and showing them down. We do support the idea of a Hope Team. Thank you Councilmembers Swan for the support and including the two budget actions that we are focused in on tonight. One is to increase the encampment house, encampments and tiny house villages in Seattle and to fund shares in City 2. Thank you Councilmember Morales and Lewis for co-signing. The other is to help shares indoor shelters stay open 24/7 so they don't have to go back to nighttime only. Thank you Tim from that person, Morales and Gonzalez for co-signing this and Councilperson Herbold for your concern for the future. My main point tonight is that diversity in shelter options is necessary for moving forward. Cookie cutter shelters and villages do not fit all people. We must build variety. In conclusion, please support diversity and share shelters and encampments. Thank you.
Thank you very much Sean. Rich, good evening.
My name is Rich Voget and I am a member of the 43rd District Democrats Environmental Caucus. Lately, I read the following. COVID is a pop quiz. Climate change is a final exam. Now in college, you could goof off and cram and still pass a final. Climate change is more like farming. You can't goof off in the summer, plant a crop in September, and harvest it the next month. Not addressing climate change now brings us closer to the point when it becomes irreversible. The cost to climate change grows every day that we delay. It's absolutely clear the city needs additional revenues in 2021. We do not support the diversion of the Jump Start payroll tax. We hope you will consider now the $20 increase in the vehicle excise tax and consider submitting the full $60 tax to voters in 2021. We support funding of executive and council staff to study possible taxes such as a 1% income tax, a Seattle gas tax, and a building carbon excise tax, and then implement one or more of them in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three, oh, the next person is Daniel. Daniel, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Lokic, Economic Development Manager for the U District Partnership. I'm calling today to support Councilmember Peterson's statement of legislative intent to propose a strategy for funding and distributing financial assistance to small businesses adversely impacted during construction projects. In the U District, seven BIPOC businesses are at risk of displacement as construction of the Light Rail Station and 43rd Street, COVID-19, and most recently vandalism have had a compounding and disproportionate impact on these small businesses. We need your help to create a construction impact mitigation program today. Please support Councilmember Peterson's statement of legislative intent and please implement a construction impact mitigation program to prevent the displacement of many of the small businesses we all love. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. The next three speakers are Grace Nordhoff, Melinda Frazier, and Logan Swan. Grace, good evening. Grace, just star six to unmute yourself. Hey Grace, if you can hear me, just star six to unmute yourself one more time. Sometimes it doesn't go through that first time. Okay Grace, I'm going to come back to you. We will go to Melinda. Good evening, Melinda. Yes, we can. Thanks, Melinda.
My name is Melinda Frazier and I stay at the Will Women Shelter at Trinity Parish and I'm asking for your support for budget item number 19 so that our shelter and those of our brothers and sisters in share can continue 24 hours through 2021. When I'm depressed, I can just say, stay inside and know I'm safe and I can rest and eat in peace and I don't have to worry about toting my stuff around and where I'm gonna get my next meal. I have PTSD and being outside, I don't know what's going to set me off. Having 24/7 shelter has helped me heal and look to the future and get my life together. I feel like my old self again. I was homeless. I'm getting me back. We've been given a chance again by being here 24/7 and this funding will save our lives. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story tonight. Logan, good evening.
Yeah, my name is Logan Swan. I'm a union ironworker and a member of Socialist Alternative. I'm calling this evening with the People's Budget Movement, which also stands with the Solidarity Budget. For years, I've been building glittering towers in this city as I watched my brothers and sisters struggle to manage the long hours being involved with their families, the ever-increasing commutes from home from an increasingly unaffordable city, and now the safety concerns of working during a pandemic and the kitchen table concern of a flagging economy. In previous meetings, I've heard council members say they oppose an austerity budget, but that's exactly what Mayor Durkin is pushing with over $200 million in cuts to vital services. A majority of sitting council members also pledge to defund SPD by at least 50%, which is necessary if our libraries, parks, housing, and roads are going to keep their funding. So far, the only council member unambiguously on the side of working families and marginalized communities is Shamit Swan. What's being decided in a city budget is priority and you all are making a clear choice of whose side you're on as we enter prolonged crisis and widening inequalities. The world's billionaires enriched themselves by over $2 trillion just during the pandemic while working families are standing in lengthening food bank lines that stretch the block. Don't put the burden of recession and pandemic further on the shoulders of workers. Our knees are already buckling from high rents and low wages. Tax big business, not us. Don't prioritize the blow to police department over Black lives. Combat racist gentrification by funding affordable housing. Support Africa Down, Councilmember Shamit Swan's amendment to acquire Cairo Center to be developed into community-owned and permanently affordable housing. Our movement already won a progressive tax mechanism with our tax on Amazon and big business, so use it.
Thank you Logan, and we're going to go back to Grace again to see if we can address the technical issues on our end. Make sure that you're off mute. Star six. Oh, great. Wonderful. Grace, please go ahead.
Hello, City Councilmembers. My name is Grace Nordhoff. I live in District 4 and I'm a board member of the Seattle Public Library Foundation. Since the Seattle Public Library closed our library branches on March 13th due to COVID-19, library services, programs, and access to books and materials have gone online. Mayor Durkin's budget assumed our libraries would remain closed through June of next year. But since our budget was sent to the council, Governor Inslee submitted guidelines that create the opportunity for our libraries to open at 25% capacity. I hope the Seattle City Council will give full consideration to increasing the mayor's budget request so that the library can successfully implement the governor's guidelines to safely and creatively reopen our libraries at 25%. It will be wonderful to have our libraries reopened again. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Naomi Natsuhara, Kate Rubin, and Chris Sams. Naomi, good evening.
Hi, I'm Naomi Natsuhara. I'm a renter in District 5 and I support the solidarity budget. We must divest from SPD by at least 50% with those funds distributed to communities most impacted through a participatory budgeting process. The best way to ensure safety is by meeting basic needs through investments in housing, healthcare, and other essential services and that these investments come from funds divested from police, prosecutors, and courts, not from any other city funds. We cannot create holistic or sustainable community safety by draining other public services like transportation, parks, and COVID relief. Under-resourcing and over-policing Black communities has already led to the criminalization of basic survival for these individuals and families. It's time to show you believe in Black Lives Matter by divesting from police and prosecutorial systems that have perpetuated the destruction of Black lives. We must further decriminalize survival for those unhoused, beginning with reallocation of navigation team funds to offer dignified supportive services for those living homeless via affordable housing, access to sanitation, emergency shelter, and rapid rehousing alongside community-based outreach rather than policing. Defund SPD, invest in community. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. Kate, good evening. And just for the record, Kate Rubin is who we're looking for. Thanks Kate.
Hi, my name is Kate Rubin. I'm a renter in District 2 and I'm the Executive Director of B Seattle. We are proud endorsers of the solidarity budget. I'm calling to ask you to divest from SPD by at least 50% and invest these funds into Black communities and community-led health and safety programs. We are experiencing a homelessness crisis in this city with Black and Indigenous folks being disproportionately affected and we are facing a massive wave of evictions upon the end of the moratorium. Investing directly in our community by fully funding tenant services and eviction defense, tiny house villages, purple bag trash pickup for encampment residents, and street sinks as well as implementing the proposed Hope Team would improve the quality of life for many marginalized members of our community and ultimately reduce crime and segregation. This pandemic is not ending anytime soon and we need to protect our neighbors rather than criminalizing poverty. Thank you.
Thank you very much Kate. Chris, good evening. Hey Chris, just star six to unmute.
Hello.
Hi there.
Good evening neighbors. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Well, I'm Chris Sams, resident of D5, commenting on the proposed budget. Illegal encampments are devastating lives all across Seattle. And we're fed up with illegal encampments in our parks and public spaces and the human trafficking and illegal drug use that your policies are allowing to continue. As a result, we share the following Human Dignity Proclamation, which we ask the council to consider. We will no longer tolerate human trafficking and illegal drug use in our parks and public spaces. We affirm that all people have dignity and are to be treated with respect and kindness. We'll provide safe and secure shelter for unsheltered people where they will be offered rest, food, and services to help them find their way out of homelessness. We will remove illegal encampments citywide and the people living in these encampments may choose from three options. One, to be transported to city-provided shelter where they will be offered services and rest. Two, to move on, or three, to be cited and/or arrested as the law allows. We will prioritize human dignity in working through the complex challenges facing our community while recognizing that government cannot and should not solve everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much Chris. The next three speakers are Alisa Roman, Andrew Palmer, and Brian Clark. Thank you very much, Chris. The next three speakers are Alisa Roman, Andrew Palmer, and Brian Clark. Alisa, good evening.
Hello, this is Alisa Roman. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Alisa.
Okay, thank you. I am a constituent, and I represent over 6,000 Seattle supporters of Moms Demand Action. We stand today with our community partners, Choose180, and Community Passageways to urge you to ensure that this $100 million investment is designated through participatory budgeting, not through the mayor's task force. This time, calls for a paradigm shift, and how we disburse city dollars in participatory budgeting is that shift. Those most impacted know what their community needs to be healthy and safe and should decide how to spend it. We ask that these funds be invested specifically in the Black community, as this community is most historically underfunded due to our racist policies. And we ask not that the money not be taken from other critical BIPOC-led efforts resourced by the city. We support assigning funds to violence intervention and prevention programs based on what the community deems most impactful. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thanks for calling in. The next three speakers are Andrew Palmer, Brian Clark, and Kyla, newcomer. I do want to note before Andrew, before you start, real quick, we are still interested in hearing from Doris O'Neil, number 17, Tushar Kunanra, number 20, and Mira Graywall, number 34. With that, we'll turn it over to Andrew. Andrew, you're number 51. Thanks for waiting. Just star six, unmute. Looks like we still have you muted on my end over here, Andrew. Star six, unmute real quick one more time. Okay, I thought I saw you come off mute earlier. So I'm just gonna remind folks, we have Andrew, and then Brian Clark and Kyla. Andrew, if you can hear me, just star six, unmute, or we're happy to come back to you. Okay, great. We'll come back to you. Brian, good evening. We'll turn it over to you. Thanks for waiting. And just star six, unmute. Perfect.
Hello, council. My name is Brian. I'm a homeowner in Ballard. I'm calling in support of Defund SPD, Decrim Seattle, and 350 Seattle. We're calling you to follow through on the commitment you made this summer to defund SPD and reinvest those funds in BIPOC communities through a participatory budgeting process. I'm calling on you to fund COVID relief, affordable housing, and Seattle's Green New Deal, specifically to my councilmember Dan Strauss. You've said this year that you're committed to defunding SPD and that you're following the lead of BIPOC community organizations. If you don't vote to cut SPD's budget by 50%, you're failing to uphold your commitment. And while I understand you've got a lot of constituents in Ballard with differing concerns, I find it baffling that you continue to support the navigation team despite their history of violent activity. Be the leader that you've claimed to be and vote for relief from police violence and for aid to survive COVID. Throughout the summer, we were told that 2021 budgeting process is where the real material defunding of SPD could take place. I stand with the many groups and overwhelming number of callers this evening who are calling for a solidarity budget to divest from police and pollution and invest in community. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And Kyla, good evening. Then we'll come back to Andrew. Hi, good evening, Kyla.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kyla, newcomer, and I'm a resident of District 6, and I'm here tonight testifying on behalf of youth care. As one of the largest providers serving youth experiencing homelessness in Seattle, we urge you to redirect at least 50% of SPD's funds directly into community-led, public safety organizations, youth-focused safety programs, and participatory budgeting for public safety. The participatory budget process is key to centering the voices, needs, and concerns of our most affected and most vulnerable community members. Youth experiencing homelessness are disproportionately BIPOC and disproportionately experience excessive force at the hands of law enforcement. We need to stop criminalizing homelessness. Reinforcing community-driven health and safety systems will prevent harm and not merely respond to it. That starts with reinvesting in our communities and passing a budget that reflects the values of social justice and racial equity. This is an investment in the health and safety for all Seattle residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for calling in today. And let's go back to Andrew and see if we have addressed any technical issues. Andrew, if you can hear me. Just wanna see if we can get you in. Star six to unmute. Great, I see you are not muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Whew, here we go. My name is Andrew Palmer. I'm a homeowner and part-owner of two music venues in D6. I am commenting today on restoring the nightlife business advocate position. Seattle's reputation as a live music city makes it a national tourist stop, drawing tens of thousands of musicians annually and making us a destination city for Washington residents and national and international travelers. Live music industry pumps millions of dollars into our economy, not just for venues but for hospitality and tourism industries, which generate $12 for every $1 spent on a concert ticket. The nightlife industry directly employs thousands of workers and supports an entire ecosystem of labor, from musicians to graphic artists to instrument shops. But now, Seattle's creative ecosystem and reputation as a live music city are in jeopardy. Economic clusters like ours take decades to build yet are threatened due to the pandemic, which would have a direct and long-term negative impact on cultural workers, tourism, hospitality, and other industries. The nightlife advocate is the one person in city government who understands and is dedicated to our plight during the pandemic and our survival in the years to follow. If these responsibilities are split up amongst various positions, you don't understand our industry or situation, our sector's voice will not cut through. Scott Wuskelik, the current nightlife advocate, has spent years developing relationships with live music venues, and he's uniquely positioned to understand the challenges we face. He's been our lifeline alone in grant info and permitting challenges during the pandemic. Seattle nightlife so desperately needs an advocate when it comes time to figure out how to reopen safely and jumpstart our industry. The heart and soul of Seattle depends on a healthy, creative sector, which depends on the nightlife advocate to ensure a safer and robust return to business post-pandemic.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Feel free to send in your comments, too. I think we got the most of it, and appreciate you talking quick, but that was really helpful. So if you wanna send it in, that'd be great. The next three speakers are Daniel Wang, Catherine Dodson, and Gwendolyn Hart. That will bring us up to number 56. Daniel, good evening. Just star six, unmute. Hey, Daniel, I see you are still muted on my end over here. Just star six. Perfect.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name's Daniel. I'm a Seattle renter in District 4 and a member of Socialist Alternative, speaking here in support of the People's Budget Movement and the Solidarity Budget. Today is the day to take a stand against Mayor Durkin's austerity budget. This thing is an absolute slap in the face to all the people who came out on the streets this summer, the absolute contempt for working people to cut $49 million from affordable housing, and then to fill budget holes with revenue from the Amazon tax, which Mass Movement fought so hard for to address Seattle's housing crisis. If you wanna fill budget holes, why don't we take a look at our police department? There's been a movement all summer long demanding that police budgets get defunded by at least 50%. And despite all the supposed support for BLM from city council members, Councilmember Sawan has been the only one to put forward this demand from the solidarity budget. It is time for the rest of this city council to get on board with defunding the cops by at least 50%. It is time for them to support the People's Budget proposal of an elected community oversight board with full powers over the police, including hiring and firing, because the police are supposed to protect and serve communities. And if you stop ignoring the people in these communities, you will find that they feel neither protected by or served by or even safe from the cops. But I'd like to finish on the Africa Town Land Trust's important proposal to acquire the former Cairo Center and to develop it into community-owned affordable housing. Councilmember Sawan has put forth a budget amendment to enact this proposal. If you think Black communities matter, vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Catherine, good evening. You are up next. Just reminder, star six to unmute yourself. There we go.
My name is Catherine Dodson. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative, supporting the solidarity budget. Through this, we're raising the rate of investment in defunding SPD, but we're investing in Black communities. To that end, the $100 million promised by Mayor Durkin needs to come directly from police funding, not from the Amazon tax. We need a massive expansion of progressive taxes like the Amazon tax to fund housing and avoid austerity cuts. I'd also like to voice specific support for Councilmember Sawan's amendment supporting the Africa Town community land trust proposals, as well as Councilmember Morales's amendment for culturally responsive curriculum and restored of justice. These proposals go hand-in-hand with community calls to defund SPD by at least 50% or 100%, to close the youth jail now, to end state contracts with Sequel, to stop the sweeps, and to make the SPAG contract negotiations transparent. I'm very grateful for the district represented by Councilmember Sawan, and wanna thank her for continuously fighting to defund and demilitize the Seattle police. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time tonight. Gwendolyn, you are up next.
I'm Logan.
Hi there, we can hear you.
I'm in today to support the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget. Right now, you have a choice before you about who will shoulder the cost of pandemic, big business or working people. Big businesses like Amazon, Microsoft, and Starbucks are currently reporting record profits. And meanwhile, the working people of Seattle have been burdened greater than ever before by COVID, and they cannot bear the additional weight of this austerity budget by Mayor Durkin. We cannot afford cuts to libraries, transportation services. We need to increase the Amazon tax and make big businesses their fair share as outlined by the People's Budget. We must also cut the police budget, which has ballooned to ridiculous size. We need to cut it back, defund it 50% or more, and put that money back where it belongs in our communities. We need to invest these funds and programs that counter gentrification and racism into the Tiny Homes program to provide a path to housing for homeless people and to rent and mortgage relief and the COVID relief and into the Green New Deal, so you'll have a future to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. The next three speakers are Erin Crismore, Darnell Hilber, and Tori Westman. If you can all hit star six now, that'd be great. Erin, you are up first. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Erin, and I am a renter in District 4 in support of the People's Budget. I am a medical laboratory scientist at Harborview Medical Center. I voluntarily transferred to HEDA virology in the beginning of this pandemic to help with the transition with COVID testing, and my partner is an emergency room nurse. We both work evenings and walk to and from work. This meant we had to walk home during the height of the Black Lives Matter protest, and we're personally impacted by the SPD excessive use of force. We frequently walked home through clouds of tear gas, then had to fall asleep to flashbangs, sirens, and helicopters flying overhead nearly every night. I had so much trouble sleeping, I had to get prescription sleep aids. I'm well aware that the terror we experienced from the SPD during this time mirrors the experiences that Black and Brown communities have had for decades, and I demand that we hold the SPD accountable for this terror. Where are our priorities when we cannot provide our healthcare workers with proper PPE, but we can provide an endless supply of tear gas and flash grenades to the police department to use against these healthcare workers? Healthcare workers like myself are constantly seeing our budget slashed, and they're constantly seeing education budget slashed, and community resource budget slashed. Now Mayor Durkin is asking for more cuts in the vital services, yet she cannot ask for cuts in the blow to the police department. I find all of this unacceptable. This is why I support the police, the People's Budget that will defund SPD and reinvest in communities hurt by their policies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Darnell, I see you listed as not present, so if you do call back in, we're happy to go back to you, Darnell, number 58. Onto number 59, Tori. Good evening. You are up next.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Tori Westman. I live in District 5 and am a member of IBW Local 46. I'm calling to represent myself and a group of union members who support Black Lives Matter and the solidarity budget. If Seattle wants to say that Black Lives Matter, then we must listen to the people who have been asking for the police to be defunded by at least 50%. We're asking to ensure that the money that's being invested in Black communities comes from divesting from the police, not from Jump Start Seattle. We're asking not to criminalize our houseless neighbors, but instead provide affordable housing, tiny houses, basic sanitation, and emergency shelter. To keep Seattle a pro-union city, we must make sure the Green New Deal community oversight board is fully staffed and funded to help create union jobs. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. The next three speakers are Love Sharma, Anna Hickman, and Erica Baber. Love, you are up next.
Hi, my name is Love Sharma, and I'm a homeowner in District 4. I'm a software professional, and I'm also a member of Maple Leaf in solidarity with Black Lives. I'm calling to express support for the solidarity budget and to urge you to defund SPD by at least 50% and to let BIPOC-led community organizations have a say in how these funds are used. Instead of policing, we need to invest in education, housing, healthcare, and empowering communities to support themselves. Statistics after statistics show that investment in community is what prevents crime rather than overpolicing, which only results in our overly punitive society and further damages those communities. Also, I want to say hello to Councilmember Peterson, with whom I've been having a one-sided conversation for over six months now. Alex, please return my calls. Thank you.
The next person is Anna. Good evening, Anna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Okay. Hi, my name is Anna Hackman. I'm an educator at Seattle Central College, D5 resident, and a rank-and-file member of AFT 1789. I am here to voice my support for the solidarity budget put forth by Decriminalize Seattle and the King County Equity Now Coalition. Seattle Central students are working-class BIPOC Seattle residents who are suffering austerity on our campus, losing their financial aid, unable to register for classes, no tech to transition online, in addition to unemployment, houselessness, and police violence, all while trying to keep themselves safe from COVID-19. And what is so outrageous about this is that it doesn't need to be this way. We have the money to support our students' education, housing, and other material needs. The problem is the money goes to the institutions that kill them rather than those that support them. And it is time for a budget that reduces human suffering rather than contributing to it, and the solidarity budget is a necessary way forward. We need to defund the police, not Jump Start, not the Equity Fund by 50%, and let the youth who are most impacted by police violence be the ones to guide that redistribution through participatory budgeting. Thank you. Black Lives Matter.
Thank you for your time. And Erica Baber, you are up next.
Hello, I am Erica. I'm a sophomore at Garfield High School, a District 2 resident, a member of the Sunrise Movement, and a lifelong Seattleite. I'm here to ask that you make the following three changes to the 2021 budget to align it with the demands of the solidarity budget. First, divest from SPD by at least 50% and put those funds into BIPOC communities through a process of participatory budgeting. Please do not create public safety, meeting people's basic needs. Thus, point two. Investments in BIPOC communities have to come from police budgets, not Jump Start Seattle money needed for COVID relief and to keep important services running. Three, this budget must include funding for affordable housing and dignified homeless outreach. Having armed officers conducting sweeps of homeless people just doesn't make sense. Instead, that money should go towards community-based outreach workers and creating more dignified shelters. The Seattle I have grown up in is one with countless parks and expanded transit systems, schools that have helped me grow, and minimal police budget. I'm asking that you expand an experience like that to more Seattleites by adopting the principles of this solidarity budget. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Folks, we are at number 63. We're gonna take a quick pause for two minutes. I'll put my timer on over here. I wanna give the folks in the clerk's office and our IT folks a quick pause as they change shifts. So if you'll bear with us one second, I'll also give folks a quick reminder, a PSA. I am sorry, I did not understand the technicalities here, but I do want to note, it appears that you need to push star six after you hear the prompt that you have been unmuted. That might be where things are getting a little crosswise. So once you hear you have been unmuted, then push star six. And I'll make sure to give a quick pause so that folks can do the sequencing of that unmuting action. But again, you'll hear star six on the line, and then push, I'm sorry, you'll hear you have been unmuted on the line, and then that's your cue to push star six. Okay, so we'll give it another try. Looks like our team is still getting set up behind the scenes. We wanna thank our folks from Communications, IT, Clerk's Office, Seattle Channel, and Fratito Cuevas in my office, who is helping to staff this effort for our public hearings and the Select Budget Committee overall. I'm gonna go ahead and read the names of the next three people, and I think by then, we will have given folks the two-minute time needed to do the switch over. In fact, I wanna read the next five names, because there's two people that are listed as not present, so I wanna make sure that we call your names so that you hear it and get a chance to dial in. The next three speakers are Alicia Glenwall, Jo Montgomery, and Annie Unra. Annie, I have you listed as number 65 and not present. Annie, I have you listed as number 65 and not present, so please do dial in. And after that, we have Neil Anderson and Dave Ellenwood. Dave, you are number 67, and I have you listed as not present, so please dial in, Annie and Dave. With that, I think we're ready to go. Alicia, you are up next. And again, you'll hear you have been unmuted and then push star six. Thanks all.
Hi there. This is Annie Unruh, so you might have your numbers mixed up. So my name is Annie Unruh. I am a renter in District Three. Today is actually my birthday, and my birthday wish is for Seattle City Council to defund SPD by 50% and follow the Solidarity Budget by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. Their priorities are the following: divest from SPD, use the participatory budgeting process, preserve vital public services, increase access to shelter and affordable housing, create a Green New Deal, incur the criminalization of poverty and mental health struggles. If nothing else, please fund the $100 million for BIPOC communities that Mayor Durkin has promised, using money from SPD and the criminal justice system, not the Jump Start Tax and rainy day funds. I also support funding for public handwashing stations. And please stop the sweep. There's no reason to put people at risk by getting rid of their homes. I also support Sowon's proposed funding for tenant education to keep people from falling into homelessness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time tonight. The next person is Alicia.
Can you?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, Alicia. Oh, we could hear you for a second. I think the star six was hit one, one. There we go. Oh, we got you now.
There it is. Okay, sorry, thanks. Hi, my name is Alicia Glennwall. I'm with the Coalition Ending Gender-Based Violence. We're also proud members of the Seattle Human Services Coalition. Our work to end domestic and sexual violence and the work of all the other providers, community members, and social and racial justice activists speaking to you tonight are inextricably linked. Safe, healthy, liberated families are the foundation of safe, healthy, liberated communities. And all people deserve the chance to live whole, fulfilled lives. We agree with the many speakers here tonight that Mayor's proposed budget doesn't go nearly far enough in investing in our communities. Please go further in rolling back our city's inequitable overinvestment in the criminal legal system. Prioritize funding for BIPOC-led, community-based programs, including services addressing domestic and sexual violence. Protect revenues from the Jump Start payroll tax. Fully fund the expanded legal defense network. And put your full-throated support behind the Solidarity Budget and participatory budget process in order to truly reflect community needs and capacities to address public safety and public well-being. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. The next person that we have is Neil. And I also see Joe Montgomery. Thank you so much for joining us. Joe, I see you are a TDEP, so let's go ahead and have you go, because you are listed as number 64, and then we'll go to number 66, who is Neil. Thanks, Joe. Take it away.
Hey. Okay. Hi, I'm Joe Montgomery. I live in Meadowbrook, which is in councilmember Warren's district. And I want to talk about Seattle Street Sinks. And I've been volunteering for them for the last three months, so I want to tell you a little bit about that project. It is just a really concrete suggestion for how we can spend money in just a small amount of budget and do some real tangible good in our communities and reaching the people who need it. The Street Sink Project is asking for money to install 63 sinks, or nine in every district. And just in my short time helping them out, this is such a cool project. It brings dignity and community spirit. There's these really cool planter boxes you get. It recycles the water, and it goes a long way towards promoting public health, which, as we know, is something that impacts everyone. For example, just one street sink in U District provides hundreds of hand washes every week. And so 63 of those would do just an incredible impact on the city. The project is already working, and so all we need is just for you to get behind it, support it, and it's just going to be a really cool thing for our city. Seattle Street Sinks, thanks.
Excellent, thank you. And the next three are Neil Anderson, Dave Ellenwood, and Star Wiley. Good evening, Neil.
Hi, my name is Neil Anderson, and I'm calling in support of the Solidarity Budget. Some have argued that redirecting police funding into community programs can't be done in one step, that we have to wait to see if they work before taking cops off the street. But results from other cities have already shown that this works. In Eugene, 911 calls that involve people with mental illness are handled by trained counselors rather than police. They now handle 20% of the 911 calls at a fraction of the cost. And even the police chiefs said they've been more successful. And now this is being replicated in at least four other cities. Another argument against it is that civilian responders could be placed in danger, but the facts don't bear this out. With less than 1% needing police backup, the data showed that people experiencing mental crisis are overwhelmingly not dangerous. And an armed response too often escalates into a conflict that could have been avoided. Taking these calls out of the police department doesn't get us all the way to 50%, but this one change can get us a lot of the way there. And since a quarter of police shootings involve someone experiencing mental distress, reducing the number of these interactions isn't everyone's interest. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dave, just want to let you know, we still have you listed as not present. If you are listening in on the listen-in line, please dial into the number that was sent via email after signing up on the public testimony link. That's true as well for Darnell Hilber, number 55, Castile, number 22, number 34, Mayor, and 37. I'm sorry. 37 we did hear from. So those three folks, let's keep going. Star, good evening. Thanks so much for joining us.
Hi, I'm Star Willie, a renter in District Seven, a barista on furlough, and a member of Socialist Alternative. I'm calling to support the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget. Please sponsor and support amendments put forth by councilmembers Sowon. Don't cut millions from libraries, parks, community centers, transportation, and affordable housing. Build more tiny houses. Fund the Share Wheel Hygiene Center. And emergency food programs. Stop the cuts to working-class people and increase the Amazon tax. We shouldn't have to sacrifice our basic needs to get by. Working people have lost hours and jobs during the COVID-19 pandemic, while billionaires like Jeff Bezos increase their wealth by trillions of dollars. Defund SPD by 50%. SPD's loaded budget is more than twice what the city spends on human services, including elder care, homeless services, affordable housing, and neighborhoods, art, and culture combined. Fund the community elected oversight board and give it the power it needs to hold SPD accountable. Fund BIPOC communities and community needs for all. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. Jessica. Jessica Skoslow, Joey Wallace, and Lucas Vargas are the next three people. Jessica, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am calling, like a lot of people, in support of the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget, and also calling to encourage all councilmembers to make good on your promise to defund SPD by a full 50%, to get that money promptly to Black and Brown restorative justice programs and other community programs. I am still very concerned about the mayor using the Jump Start Seattle money to cover the costs of budget cuts. We fought really hard for that money, and specifically for it to go to affordable housing. And also specifically, the first 18 million of it to go to affordable housing in the Central District, specifically for Black households that have been pushed out of the Central District, and that is very important. And working people and poor people do not need to pay for this crisis that they did not create. Let's go where the money is. The corporations have it. Let's increase the Jump Start Tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Joey, good evening.
Yeah, that's great. I just want to know what you guys are going to do about the illegal encampments, and specifically, the public health crisis with the drug addiction problem. You know, these people are not going to go away willingly. I hope you realize that. And to be frank, a lot of these people are quite violent. So be realistic here. I know Andrew Lewis went to the London School of Economics. But is he really a genius? Come on. And how are you going to enforce this is a new policy of yours? Are you just going to give free money to BIPOC communities? What does that mean? Free healthcare centers? I mean, you got to have a way to let these people contribute. And that's through innovation. Just think about it realistically here. And I read an article in the Koma News. It also said that people are demanding these illegal encampments be removed immediately. So why aren't you doing anything about it? Need law enforcement. Enforce the law. Yes, provide community service, but do that with common sense and rationality. Thank you.
And the next person is Lucas. Good evening, Lucas.
Hi, Council. I'm Lucas, a volunteer with 350 Seattle and a member of UAW Local 4121. I'd like to say that we can do better as a city. There's a disappointing paralysis that some of our elected officials seem to be experiencing, but it's important to recognize that Seattle can be an agent of change. According to the Seattle Stranger, between 2017 and 2019, Seattle police killed at least 16 people, many of which were not investigated. That is equal to the number of people killed by the police in the entire United Kingdom, the entire country of Belgium, and the entire country of the Netherlands over the past five years. Given their performance, Seattle's police budget is an outrage to common sense, and the evidence does not support the idea that sensible reductions to the police budget will impact public safety. I urge city councils to use their brains, do what's right for our communities, and pass the Solidarity Budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Michael Wilmarth, Max Report, and Laura Black. Michael, good evening. Hi, Michael. Michael, you are up next, followed by Max Report and Laura Black. Just star six, unmute yourself. Michael? Just one more second. Michael, if you can hit star six, unmute. Okay, we see you are still on the line, and I want to make sure to come back to you. You just looked muted on your end, so we're going to go to Max, and then Michael will come back to you. Good evening, Max.
Thank you. My name's Max, and I'm a mental health counselor and resident of District Three. I'm calling to express my support for the Solidarity Budget and disapproval of Mayor Durkin's austerity budget. If Seattle wants to call itself a progressive city, we need to put our money where our mouths are. That means divesting from SPD by at least 50%, using those funds equitably in communities disproportionately impacted by our regressive and racist policies, preserving funding for parks, transit, and other vital services, investing in affordable housing and low-barrier shelters, decriminalizing poverty and homelessness, and implementing a Green New Deal and addressing our climate crisis and our crisis of inequality. We're watching what you do here and will not accept half measures, budgetary sleight of hand, or efforts to punt these decisions behind the veil of the Seattle process. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Laura. Laura Black, you are up next.
Hi there. My name is Laura Black. I'm a renter in District Three, and I work for Sola Ground with our Rapid Re-Housing Program for Families, a federally funded contract through City of Seattle. I'm speaking today in partnership with Wellspring Family Services about our Rapid Re-Housing Programs, which help homeless families to obtain and maintain stable housing through supportive case management and short-term income-based rental assistance. Our families were hit hard by the pandemic, with most of them losing work and wages, leading to our programs paying one and a half to two times our rental budget and extending services far beyond program design. We are running out of money needed to keep our families housed. Our contract monitors are allowing us to spend 2021 funds now to get through this year, but we are very concerned about next year. I encourage council to support increasing Rapid Re-Housing Funds by $750,000 in 2021. Thank you to councilmembers who have already stepped up to support this critical program, and thank you to our participant Carrie, who will be speaking tonight in support of this important strategy to end homelessness. In closing, I would also like to urge the council to support the Solidarity Budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go back to Michael, followed by Camila Walter. Michael, hi, thanks for joining us again.
Hi, sorry about that. My dumb phone was not cooperating. My name's Michael Wilmarth, and I'm a resident of District Three. I'm calling this evening, like so many others, to voice my support for the Solidarity Budget. How we allocate public resources is a direct reflection of our city's values. That some of our communities are under-resourced and overpoliced is not an accident, but a function of a long history of extraction, discrimination, and criminalization. Rather than continue to finance an increasingly militarized police force whose primary role is the maintenance of a wildly unjust social order, I strongly urge the council to defund SPD by at least 50% and distribute those funds through a participatory budgeting process that centers building equity in an explicitly anti-racist and ecologically sustainable manner. The principles espoused in the Solidarity Budget and the incredible coalition that has emerged in support of it provides a framework for transforming our city into a place that prioritizes taking care of its own. Thank you. I gave up my time.
Okay, thanks so much, Michael, for calling in. I totally understand the phone issue, so no problem. Camila, good evening.
Hi, my name is Camila, and I work for Real Change. I'm a resident of District Six. I, like so many people who have already stated this, want to urge the city council to take very seriously the needs in our city. The Solidarity Budget outlines investments that will support equity and a more livable Seattle for all. Please defund the Seattle Police Department by at least 50% and invest in Black communities. Offer housing for all, decriminalize poverty, and support a Green New Deal for Seattle. We are in crisis. Our communities are hurting and are not safe. It is cold outside. Please support the Solidarity Budget and choose to do something different and take these issues seriously. I also urge the council to fund the Seattle Street Sink, which provides handwashing stations in high-traffic outdoor areas and is accessible public health intervention for all. I'd also encourage you to support the Purple Bag Program and Councilmember Morales's Hope Team. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. The next three people are listed as not present, so if you are listening in, please do dial into the public testimony line. The number should have been sent to you, and the email that you received is confirmation. Number 76, Brian Cook. Number 78, Rebecca Michael. And number 79, Tracy Harrell. Please do dial in if you can hear me, and we'd love to hear from you when we see you are present. We'll go back to you. The next three speakers will be Megan Shankar, Yossi Cohen, and Jackson Petris. Good evening, Migna.
Hi, my name is Migna Shankar, and I'm a second year at UW and a member of Fridays for Future Seattle and Sunrise UW. As many others have said tonight, it's imperative that you vote to adopt the Solidarity Budget, because our city's most vulnerable members, especially Black and Indigenous people, have been consistently harmed and marginalized by the Seattle Police Department and the city's inequitable policies. At my school, the UW Black Student Union has been tirelessly fighting for the university to recognize their demands to stop glorifying slave owners and to reduce the influence of UW PD. But our city also needs to change so that my Black classmates and community members are given the equity that they deserve. Reallocating the 2021 budget through the Solidarity Budget puts Seattle on the path to combat racial and climate injustice, while ensuring that the people have a say in where the money comes from and how it's spent. This money should not come from Jump Start, where it is also needed. It should come from defunding SPD by 50%. There are so many more places where this money is needed, rather than a police department that commits violence against minorities and peaceful protesters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Yossi Cohen, Jackson Petrus, and Carrie McDowell. I want to note as well, Matthew Lang, if you can hear me, you are listed as ready to sign up, number 81, but not present. So please dial in if you can, Matthew. Yossi, good evening.
Hello, my name is Yossi Cohen. I rent an apartment in District Three, just next to Cal Anderson. In this meeting, you're hearing from organized activists that do not represent most of Seattle. A poll from the end of September shows that only 20% are supporting defunding the police by halves. I urge you, councilmembers, please listen to polls. Please make sure that you listen to regular people who live in the city. Please reach out to everyday members of your community and make sure that you hear their voices. Specifically, I want to call out to Dan Strauss, Andrew Lewis, and Lisa Herbold. You made promises in the past to increase the number of officers. We, residents of Seattle, still want to see you follow up on these promises. I want to express support for the mayor's proposed budget, and I want to also express some objections to Lisa Herbold's economic duress legislation, which could end up hurting people who live and work in this city. And last, please listen to Councilmember Alex Pedersen when he's saying that every taxpayer dollar must be spent using smart goals, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-based. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Thank you so much. The next person is Jackson. Good evening.
Hey. Good evening. Thank you. My name's Jackson Peach. Like the fruit, I'm a renter in District Four. I'm a deeply disorganized and barely active person. Thank you, previous caller. Firstly, Councilmember Peterson, you're absolutely right that this bond contract needs reform, but follow our first caller's advice and match that reform with shifting SPD duties away. Otherwise, there's no point in trying to reform the contract. Also, yes to the proposed Tiny House Village on Rosalton 45th. We need more and more diverse solutions. And I think I've called in before and mentioned that I just moved here this year and have been deeply disappointed with Seattle's priorities so far. Like people have said before, the budget is a document that shows our moral values. So, support the demands of the King County Equity Now Coalition in Decriminalize Seattle and the solidarity budget, which many before me have more articulately articulated. But just to remind you, let's play the hits. Divest 50% from SPD or more, preserve vital services, Green New Deal. I spent a long time, lucky enough to be able to dodge a smoke inside. Not everyone was so lucky. You know the rest. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you for your time. Carrie, good evening.
Hi. My name is Carrie McDowell. I would like to say good evening to the council members. Can you hear us?
I can. Thank you so much.
Okay. I am part of the Rapid Rehousing. I am someone who has been helped by the Rapid Rehousing Program. Without Rapid Rehousing, my family would not be together today. My children and I would not be living and pursuing housing and being able to stay in steady housing. They have been a great part of keeping me basically housed from the point when I lost my housing to now, and they have given me the tools in order to keep that going. I really appreciate your guys' time and I really do feel the need that Rapid Rehousing definitely does need funding in order to keep more families off the streets.
Do you still have some time? Anything else?
Well, basically, like I said, Rapid Rehousing is very important to families in order to keep them together. I'm also a youth survivor, and that is part of what has really helped me is because the workers there, they actually look at you as not just a case-by-case. They look at you as an individual family, and more programs like this are most definitely needed in order to help, you know...
Excellent. Thank you so much. Sorry we had to cut you off at the end there. That was very helpful. Glad you got that last piece in. The next person is Chris. Good evening, Chris. Chris Miles, Mahim Lakani, and Lisa Wheeler. Lisa, we have you listed as not present, so please do dial in. Good evening, Chris. And Chris, just star six to unmute yourself. Okay, Chris, I see you listed as still muted, so I'm going to go back up to Brian Cook and then we'll come back to you, Chris. Brian, number 76, please go ahead. We will unmute you here in just a second. Great. Hi, Brian. If you... Chris, can you hear me now? All right. I'm going to go ahead with who I see listed as unmuted, and that is Chris. Chris, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, go ahead, and then we'll go back to Brian. Go ahead, Chris.
Same Chris. Same Chris.
Okay, Brian, if that's you, you can go ahead.
Yeah. Hi. I'd like to say good evening to the council budget committee members. My name is Brian Cook. I live at the share shelter gift of grace. Share supports the people's budget and the solidarity budget. We oppose the sweeps, whether by police or any city workers, shutting down the encampments. I'd like to thank Councilmember Swan for authorizing the two budget actions we're focused on tonight. One is to increase the encampments and tiny house villages in Seattle and fund Share Tent City Three. I'd like to thank Councilperson Morales and Lewis for co-signing this. The other is to help shares indoor shelters stay open 24/7, so we won't have to go back to nighttime only. I'd like to thank Councilmember Morales and Gonzalez for co-signing this, and Council Herbert for your concern for the future of the shelters in the age of COVID and beyond. I would like to speak about Councilmember Swan's proposal for developing a hygiene center at the site of the Josephineum. This hygiene center would help in containing the spread of the coronavirus, but it also...
I want to thank you, Brian, for calling in tonight. I'm sorry we didn't get that last piece, and if you could send in your comments, that'd be great. And if there's anybody else who got cut off tonight, we want to make sure to hear the rest of your comments as well. Chris, thanks for waiting.
My name is Chris Miller. My testimony today is about my experiences with homelessness when I was young and the opportunities that I have been blessed with to help me to provide for me and my family. Being unable to provide for myself at a young age due to my epilepsy, I was offered an opportunity for a consistent living arrangement to allow me time to figure out my life and how to get on track with my epilepsy. Catholic Community Services helped me with the HAM program. I now work for one of CCS's many shelters. I have been employed for over a year now at a low-barrier harm reduction shelter and have a stable life with a growing family. I now have a chance to help others the same way that I was once helped. Over the last year, I have used my life experiences to build relationships with my clients, but there is still so much more to learn to reach my full potential. Recently, I was given the opportunity to attend college through the Social Service Provider Academy at Seattle Central College to expand my education greatly. I am adding to my social service tool by twelfth growing in my profession and my ability to positively impact my clients while I...
Thank you so much. Mahim, you are up next.
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mahim and I'm a D4 resident and a member of AFD Prostaff Union. I would like to use my time to make a supplication to all the city council members. I would like you all to remember the time in July when all of you were condemning the incidence of police brutality happening nationwide and how close we all felt to making a systemic change. Most of you were on board to make a near 50% budget cut to the SPD and use that money to cure the afflictions caused by COVID and general destitution in our city. SPD has a history of protecting what police departments call "bad apples" with a fervor. They have worked really hard as an institution to make themselves not accountable for their transgressions. The mayor's budget that takes money out of affordable housing, libraries, COVID relief fund, transit, and parks is just a seal of approval on SPD's prolonged cruel and immoral behavior. Instead of promoting progressive taxation initiatives, the mayor's budget takes money out of essential services, and I urge all of you to reject the mayor's budget and support the people's budget. I work at a local community college. My wife is a librarian. This summer, while protesting shoulder-to-shoulder with our students and colleagues, the police shoved us physically and threatened us unprovoked. From our work in education, we both see that what our community needs is recent...
Thank you very much for calling in. The next three speakers are Lisa Wheeler, Doris Garcia, and Karen Gramling. I have you all listed as not present. Lisa, Doris, Karen. So, we're going to go ahead with Shannon Wells, Megan Tiana, and Emily McArthur. Shannon, good evening. Oh, Shannon, we had you as unmuted, and then I just heard you mute yourself. If you could hit... There we go. Hi. Sorry for this. Appreciate you.
Yes, it's talking to me on the phone and it's confusing.
Yes, I know, and I'm probably making it more confusing, so I apologize. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Shannon Wells. I live in District Two and I've worked in District Seven for the last 18 years at the Showbox. I'm asking council to restore the nightlife advocate position in the 2021 budget. The nightlife advocates assist over 100 venues and has over 250 nightlife stakeholders. These businesses employ thousands of people who are anxiously waiting to return to the work they love. The advocates' work is based on relationships built over the past four years. Our sector has tremendous traction under normal circumstances and has been devastated by the pandemic. The nightlife position is not interchangeable with LED staff who work with restaurants, microbusinesses, and event permitting. To take away nightlife's one advocate leaves us with piecemeal support in a time when we need laser-focused recovery. Seattle is hemorrhaging cultural spaces and workers. Music and nightlife are part of the heart of Seattle and feed an ecosystem of artists, council workers, interconnected businesses, and arts lovers. We need a long-term investment in recovery, and we need our nightlife advocate who knows our industry and who we trust to support us every step of the way. Please restore the nightlife advocate position, and thank you, councilmembers Lewis, Herbold, and Morales for supporting this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next person is Megan. Good evening. Hey, Megan. I see you listed as unmuted on my end. Just maybe double-check to make sure you're not muted on your own phone as well.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Oh, you're great. Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Megan Tenny. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a junior at Nathan Hill High School. I advocate for the solidarity budget because I believe in divesting from the racism and investing in community. The most efficient way to build safer communities is to stop it at its roots. So, investing in affordable housing, healthcare, and public safety, as well as investing in clean energy and good jobs, I think, would really help Seattle actually stand up for what it calls to be like a good liberal city that cares about climate activism and racist policies. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Emily, you are up next. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Emily McArthur. I'm a Seattle renter and a member of Socialist Alternative and the People's Budget Movement, which also stands with the solidarity budget. You know, I've watched my roommates lose their jobs, struggle to pay rent, struggle to pay tuition, and I've marched for the justice for George Floyd protest. And tonight, I'm going to be speaking to urge the Democrats on the city council to join Councilmember Shawn Swan in passing the people's budget, standing against the Mayor Durkin's austerity budget. Durkin wants to shamefully cut over $200 million from the parks and community centers, transit, and even affordable housing. This at a time when the majority major corporations like Starbucks and Amazon have been profiteering from this pandemic. So, what does it mean for politicians to say Black Lives Matter repeatedly and then pass a budget that puts the burden of the recession of the pandemic on marginalized communities and working people rather than on the wealthiest of our cities? The People's Budget Movement is demanding that the city council stop the budget cuts and increase the tax Amazon, and our movement wants to defund the police by at least $170 million, as Councilmember Shawn Swan has proposed. Thanks to the grassroots organizing led by Black faith leaders and the Amazon Tax Movement, we were able to win...
Thank you very much. The next person is Karen Gramling. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, members of the City Council Budget Committee. My name is Karen Gramling. I live at Share's Tent City Three. Share supports the people's budget and the solidarity budget. We oppose the sweeps, any team that includes police or city workers who's going out to encampments and shutting them down. We support the Hope Team. Thank you, Councilperson Swan, for authoring the two budget actions we're focused on tonight. One's to increase encampments and tiny house villages in Seattle and fund Share's Tent City Three. Thank you, Councilperson Morales and Lewis, for co-signing this. The other's to help Share's indoor shelters stay open 24/7 so they don't go back to nighttime only. Thank you, Councilperson Morales and Gonzalez for co-signing this, and Councilperson Herbold for your concern for the future of shelter in the age of COVID and beyond. I have a master's degree, but I'm homeless now. Share's Tent City Three allows me to be in a safe, fenced-in, sanitary, violent, and COVID-free environment. Share shelters offer effective, safe, and cheap solutions to homeless who aren't druggies or rapists. Support diversity in Share shelters and encampments.
You still have a few seconds? Okay, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate you calling in tonight, Karen, and I look forward to hearing from some more folks on the line as well. Sue Donaldson, followed by Anthony Saw and Flora Wright. Sue, good evening. Thanks for joining us. One more time, Sue. There we go.
Well, thank you to the council for taking public testimony tonight. I'm Sue Donaldson, a Library Foundation Board Member, a District Four resident, and a former Seattle City Council member, so I well know the tough task you have before you. Earlier this evening, Grace Nordoff addressed the funding needed to open the library branches earlier than the mayor's budget assumes. The library recognizes that currently the city faces many crises, as all the testimony tonight reflects. Social and racial justice, housing availability, the list is long and very important. Among these challenges is the fiscal crisis. As you know, all departments have proposed cuts. The library can live within the proposed budget cuts, but will need additional funding if the council wants the library to add any new... Thank you for all your enthusiastic support. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for dialing in today, Sue. Anthony, good evening.
Good evening, members of the City Council Budget Committee. My name is Anthony Saw, living at Share's Tent City Three. Share supports the people's budget and the solidarity budget. We oppose the sweeps and any team that includes police or city workers going out to encampments and shutting them down. Thank you, Councilperson Swan, for authoring the two budget actions we are focused on tonight. One is to increase encampments and tiny house villages in Seattle and fund Share's Tent City Three. Thank you, Councilperson Morales and Lewis, for co-signing this. The other is to help Share's indoor shelters stay open 24/7 so they don't go back to nighttime only. Thank you, Councilperson Morales and Gonzalez for co-signing this, and Councilperson Herbert for your concern for the future of shelter in the age of COVID and beyond.
You can keep going. It's okay. We have a few more seconds.
You conclude the two support divorcing the share shelters and encampments. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Yeah, absolutely. And folks, if you do hear the chime, you have about 10 to 20 seconds to wrap up. Okay, let's keep going. Flora, good evening, and we are at number 95. Flora, thanks for waiting.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks for checking.
Hi. I'm Flora Wright from District Three. I'm a member of Sunrise Seattle and Washington Youth for Climate Justice. I'm calling in support of the solidarity budget endorsed by over 150 local organizations. The 2021 budget must defund SPD by at least 50% and reallocate these funds into Seattle's Black community and community-led health and safety systems. The $100 million promise to the Black community by the mayor must be distributed through a participatory budgeting process and come from Seattle's policing budgets, not from vital public services, including Jump Start Seattle's revenue for pandemic relief and Green New Deal. I broadly ask for expansion of housing projects and dignified shelter, including community-owned affordable housing in the central district. Lastly, I urge council to expand the duress defense for more equitable Seattle. The solidarity budget rejects the notion in the mayor's budget that we have to pick between funding our interconnected needs, while millions of dollars are funneled into anti-Black violent policing. This is an opportunity to invest in true community care. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in tonight. The next person is Anitra Freeman and then Kathy Tambao. Anitra, hi. Good evening. Let's wait one more second. Anitra, just push star six one more time on your end. Looks like you're still muted on my end. Okay, Anitra, we'll come back to you. Oh, hi, Anitra. I can hear you now. Please go ahead.
It's mine.
I can hear you.
Okay.
We'll stay with you. Please go ahead. Please go ahead.
I thought Lisa was up. Can Lisa take over for me, please?
That's no problem. Lisa, what's your last name?
My last name is Owen.
No problem, Lisa. Go ahead.
Okay, and I guess I'm speaking regarding item 19, in regards to, okay, thank you, in regard to the Trinity Episcopal Parish. And because of time, and because I know you folks have been on the phone and listening to us, I've come up with a quick analogy. I hope that this will be okay. I would like to engage you in a progressive dinner and a proverbial, sorry, I have a mask on, a proverbial conversation, and you meet together, right? So there is a dinner, and there's a bunch of people, and we're enjoying ourselves. And this is how the 24-hour shelter is working for us, is that we're actually being given the capability and the ability to get back up on our feet. And so I'm requesting that you would include us in the budget for our shelter of 2021 so that we can continue on and move forward and leaning ahead to the things that are better for us so we can be all like each other. Thank you so much, and happy evening.
Hey, you did great. Thanks so much. Anything else, Anitra? Okay, we'll come back to you if you get the chance. Just feel free to sign back up for public testimony. Appreciate being on the line. Kathy, good evening. Kathy, you are followed by Jess Wallish and Sarah Kenny. For Jess and Sarah, you're listed as number 98 and 99, and we have you not listed as present, so please dial in now, and we'll get a chance to hear from you as soon as you dial in. Kathy, good evening. Please go ahead. Star six. There we go. Hi there.
Yeah, Kathy. Hello? Hi, my name is Kathy Tambao, and I stay at the Wheel Women's Shelter at Trinity Episcopal Parish. I am asking for your support for budget item 19 so that our shelter and those of our brothers and sisters in Scher can continue a 24-hour operation through 2021. Having shelter only at night means that I'm scared all the time because of the COVID and because of crimes against women. But having shelter around the clock means safety and being able to take care of myself and stay clean and healthy. I have been able to accomplish my goals of getting housing and staying COVID-free because I was safe and well-cared-for in this wheel shelter this year of 2020. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your public testimony. Jess Wallish and Sarah Kenny, we're going to come back to you if you dial in. See, you're not listed here currently, and we'll go on to the next three. Paul Quinones, followed by Gabriel Mahan, and then Leah Lucid. Paul, number 100, thanks for being with us.
Yeah, Paul Quinones here, political director with work in Washington Fair Work Center. As an organization that builds power with Black and Brown workers who are systematically under-invested in and over-policed, we'd first like to reaffirm we stand with Black leaders who are calling in council to honor your commitment to divest from policing and invest in Black communities. This summer, we partnered with Council of Passive Nations for its hazard pay and paid sick days laws for gig workers, which led to thousands of workers seeing vital increase paid during the pandemic. Through organizing, we learned that Postmates was not compliant with the law, work would impact the workers, and OLS quickly responded, moving Postmates to agree to settle for back pay and interest for 3,000 of the lowest-paid workers in Seattle. This and so much more is only possible with adequate funding for community-led enforcement of our labor laws. And tonight, we're here to request an increase to OLS's community outreach and education funds of 8.5% to account for inflation since 2017. This is the fund that resources this vital work, and we further support the Domestic Workers Standards Board's request to allocate $150,000 to OLS to implement their upcoming recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, and congratulations on the new gig. Excited to hear your name. Jess, good evening. Thank you for joining us. Jess, and then I see we still have Gabriel. So let's go with Jess. Star six, unmute Jess. Hi there.
Oh, I'm so glad that worked. Thanks for your patience.
Of course.
Good evening. My name is Jess Wallach. I'm an organizer with 350 Seattle, and I'm calling in because Seattle's Green New Deal is fundamentally about building a world where no person or place is disposable. And that's why we, as climate justice advocates in 350 Seattle, support divesting from SPD by at least 50%. We urge you, council, to make sure that investments in Black communities and community-led health and safety come from these funds divested from police and not from Jumpstart Seattle. This will critically free up revenue to reverse proposed cuts to transportation projects, parks, emergency COVID relief, Seattle's Green New Deal, and other vital city services. We know that police don't create public safety. The best way to guarantee public safety to meet people's basic needs, which in the midst of a housing crisis, global pandemic, economic recession, and climate chaos, is more important than ever. We won't get there overnight, but there's common sense steps that we can take this budget cycle to begin walking towards a healthy future for all, like expanding access to dignified shelter, affordable housing, funding the Green New Deal Oversight Board, investing in good green jobs by transitioning low-income homes to clean energy, extending the police hiring freeze into 2021, and curbing the criminalization of poverty and mental illness by expanding the duress defense and de minimis ordinance. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And we'll go back to Gabriel. Thank you for waiting.
Hey, my name is Gabriel. I'm a renter in District 3 and a tech worker. I'm calling in support of the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget because in this time of global pandemic, we need so much. We need affordable housing, especially here in District 3, and in particular in the gentrified Central District. We need fund for tenants and tenants' rights to protect them from evictions. We need emergency housing, and especially an expansion of tiny house villages, and we also need to expand food programs. And on top of all these things, we need to keep our city livable by maintaining funding to our parks and libraries, and we also need to prepare for upcoming climate disaster by funding the Green New Deal for Seattle. Because we need so much, we also need to know where this funding comes from, and that is so important. It cannot come from tax Amazon. As a volunteer for the Tax Amazon Movement, I helped over 30,000 Seattleites sign a petition, and I want to remind the council that we cannot use those funds for anything but affordable housing and not to fund the mayor's austerity budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Leah Lucid, Camille Baldwin-Bonnie, and Spencer Rawls. Leah, good evening.
Good evening. This is Leah in District 4. Thank you for hearing all of us tonight. I'm part of the Coalition of North Seattle Neighborhood Groups in solidarity with Black Lives. I march with the Morning March Seattle, and I personally witnessed the excessive force and violence of the militarized SPD at peaceful protests all summer and now fall. I'm calling to urge you to divest from SPD by at least 50% and support the redistribution of funds divested from SPD through a participatory budgeting process. To my council member, Alex Peterson, you keep doubling down about your admiration for the navigation teams, and we really want you to hear us from working directly, doing mutual aid work with our unhoused neighbors, that they do not want the navigation teams. They have been directly connected to SPD violence and sweeps of encampments and have often made referrals that were functionally useless, such as referring people to shelters without any actual available beds. So I hope you realize, from Karen, oh, sorry, Kelly, who called in earlier agreeing with you, you're falling in the side of the oppressive racist neoliberal elitist. It's not too late to learn about anti-racism and change your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Camille. Good evening. Okay, Camille, one more time. There we go. Gotcha.
Okay. My name is Camille, and I'm a constituent of Seattle City Council District 5. After summer protests and large-scale civil rights movement, I'm urging the City Council to stand by their commitment to BIPOC communities by divesting from SPD and reinvesting in community. We know that over 50% of 911 calls are noncriminal in nature. Asking officers to solve problems of housing instability, drug addiction, and mental health is costly, ineffective, and does not increase public safety. The $100 million promised to Black communities should come directly from the city's policing budgets. This will free up resources for COVID relief, housing, and other priorities. The $30 million equity fund should be reinstated. I support the 2021 solidarity budget, and I urge the council to do the same. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you for calling. Spencer, good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Spencer. I'm a regular person who lives in District 2 in North Beacon Hill, and I'm a member of Sunrise Seattle. I'm calling in like 100-plus other people today in support of the solidarity budget. It's great that the city is planning to invest in Black communities, but that money should come from defunding SPD, not from the Jumpstart revenue intended for COVID relief and the local Green New Deal. That money should also be allocated through participatory budgeting, not by the mayor's task force. Criminalizing homelessness, mental illness, and drug addiction doesn't do anything to actually solve those problems, so instead of overfunding police like we currently do, we should invest in dignified emergency shelter, affordable housing, COVID relief, mental health services, sanitation, public transit, and Seattle Green New Deal. That will actually do something to solve those problems. We deserve a budget that provides for the health and safety of everyone, not just the affluent. Please be on the right side of history and pass a budget that invests in the future equitably for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Chloe Yo, Andrea G., and Scotty Schools. Andrea, you are number 106, and you're listed as not present, so if you could please dial in, we'll get to you when you dial in. Chloe, you are number 105. Go ahead.
Hi, is this Morgan? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Awesome. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Chloe. I'm a renter in District 7 in Belltown and a member of Sunrise Seattle. Like most everyone here, I'm just calling in today in support of the solidarity budget. I urge you all to defund SPD by at least 50% and to reinvest those funds into Black communities and community-led health and safety systems. As y'all probably know, we're entering month eight into the pandemic, so I also urge you to fund COVID relief, affordable housing, and Seattle's Green New Deal. Instead of wasting vital money and resources criminalizing homelessness and poverty, we deserve a budget that meets the scale of the crisis that we're in and actually invests in our communities for years to come. So please show us that you have the courage to transform our society into one that values Black lives and prioritizes a just, equitable future so that we can survive this pandemic and climate apocalypse. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Andrea, we still see you as listed as not present, so we're going to go to Scotty Schools. Good evening, Scotty.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Scott Schuler. I'm a resident at Scher's Vet House Shelter. I wanted to speak to you tonight specifically about budget action 19 proposed by Councilmember Sawant, which allows 24/7 operations of shelters to continue for the foreseeable future. The gentleman wasn't far off the mark earlier when he said these people aren't going away. That is correct, sir. If we do not do anything, these people aren't going away. I can assure you, however, that I have no intention of staying in shelters indefinitely. I, like everyone else, found myself in a situation that I couldn't predict, and in doing the best that I can to get out of that situation, the shelter has been critical in allowing that to happen. However, if it's not 24/7, there is no solid footing for me to stand on. Kind of like being out to sea. Being homeless is like being washed overboard. Throwing a life raft, but keep your head above water, but bringing someone back on the ship or getting them on solid ground actually allows them to reevaluate their situation and get back on their feet again. I urge all councilmembers to support this critical budget action so that we can all continue moving forward with sure footing, playing on solid ground in such uncertain times. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. We are going to move on. The next three speakers, let's see, Delmeis Agüeta, Devon O'Donnell, and Evan Gerthoffer. Delmeis, you are up next, and please do correct my pronunciation. Just star six, unmute yourself. While you're doing that, I was going to say I saw Sarah Kenny, who was present, and happy to go back to Sarah. Sarah, I just saw you listed as not present again, so I apologize for that. Oh, if you're there, we'll come back to you. Delmeis, can you hear me? Star six, unmute yourself. Okay, let's go back to Sarah quickly, and then we'll come back to Delme. Sarah, good evening. Thanks for waiting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Kenny. I live in District 3 and work for Wellspring Family Services and our Rapid Rehousing for Families program. As our partner Laura from Solid Ground said earlier, our programs have been hit hard by COVID-19 with insufficient employment opportunities and virtual schooling barriers. Parents in the program are not able to obtain needed income to pay their rent. It would be devastating to see previously homeless families face homelessness again during such a dangerous time. We are running out of money needed to keep families housed, and our clients are not eligible for community rent assistance programs. We are asking you to provide additional rental assistance funds in 2021 for family rapid rehousing programs to ensure that we maintain our commitment to families and help them maintain stable housing during these uncertain times. Thank you to councilmembers who have already stepped up to support this critical program, and thank you to our participants, Grecia and Recordo, who will be speaking later tonight in support of this important strategy to end homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in. The next person, we'll go back to Delme. Just want to double-check Agüeta, if we're saying you're less than, great. I see you as unmuted. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Delmeis Agüeta from Casa Latina. Can you hear me? Hello?
Oh, we could still hear you. Thank you so much. Oh, okay, we're going to keep you on the line there, and if we can get you back in, we're going to come back to you because we could hear you well. Okay, Devon, Devon O'Donnell, and then let's go back to Delme if you are with us. We would love to hear from you. Devon, star six.
Hello. Hello.
Hi there.
All right. My name is Devon O'Donnell, District 5, unemployed trans-union worker. I'm calling to urge you to divest from SPD by at least 50%. I fully support the participatory budgeting process and demands by King County Equity Now. Every single day in Seattle, when someone is unsheltered, every day a child goes hungry, every potential death because the city squandered its funds into overpaying a settler occupational force as a day wasted and life carelessly lost. The blood spilled by Jenny's pigs is your burden to bear when you choose to capitulate to their occupation over the safety and sanctity of the people you claim to represent. You show your cowardice and incompetence. It's freezing cold tonight. People will die. Shame on the city for failing to act during the smoke and now during the freezing temperatures. During this pandemic and the cold, the city is starting to charge for buses again. Many people do not have access to heat and rely on buses for both transportation to work, medical appointments, groceries, and the chance to heat up in this freezing temperature. To resume charging when people haven't had income in months is horrible. Stop embedding aggressive policies and invest in the communities. You know the demands. I don't understand how you succumb to pigs who make more money than you. You can pull their budgets away from them. Don't hold up. Act now and destroy the police. Save thousands of lives.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Delme. Hey, Delme, Agüeta, if you can still hear me, we'd still love to hear from you. Hi, sorry that it wasn't coming through, so let's try that again. I see you unmuted.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Delmeis Agüeta, but I, please, I need an interpreter, please.
Oh, okay. Lo siento. Yo puedo. Si, está bien con vos?
Si, perfecto.
Okay. Folks, I'm going to try to translate, and we're going to give the over two minutes of time. Apologies as well. We do like to have professional translators with us, but I will give it my best today. Thank you for bearing with us. Señora, voy a tratar usualmente queremos usar una profesional, pero voy a tratar de hablar en español por vos. Okay.
Muchas gracias.
De nada.
Buenas. Mi nombre es Delmeis Agüeta. Soy limpiadora de casas, y en ocasiones hago de niñera también trabajo. Formo parte del grupo de promotoras de Casa Latina.
Okay. My name is Delmeis Agüeta. I am a domestic worker. I work cleaning houses, and I'm also part of Casa Latina.
Buenas. Mi nombre es Delmis Agüeta. Soy limpiadora de casas, y en ocasiones hago de niñera también trabajo. Formo parte del grupo de promotoras de Casa Latina.
Okay. My name is Delmis Agüeta. I am a domestic worker. I work cleaning houses, and I'm also part of Casa Latina.
Formo parte del grupo de promotoras de Casa Latina. Luchamos tanto para lograr la carta de derechos para las trabajadoras del hogar.
As part of the group from Casa Latina, who is part of the domestic workers, we fought very hard to fight for the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights.
No podemos dejar que se quede solamente en ganar. Debemos buscar estrategias, más estrategias, más fuertes para llegar a los dueños de casas y que ellos reconozcan que son empleados. Oh, okay.
I... We're not just interested in sort of changes. We need to work on enforcement and to make sure that our employers also know the rules of the enforcement.
Sí, para que ellos reconozcan que somos... que son empleadores y sepan que tienen que cumplir la ley.
That our employers know that we're cleaners, and as employers, they need to know and conform with the law.
Es por eso que pido este consejo: invertir más dinero en los fondos para la educación, el alcance, y el cumplimiento de la ordenanza.
It's because of this that I'm asking the city council to put more funding towards the Office of Labor Standards. Y? Más dinero, y qué más?
Más fondos para la educación, el alcance, y el cumplimiento de la ordenanza.
More funding for the Office of Labor Standards and making sure that there's more outreach funds as well to make sure more people are aware of the law.
Es importante porque todos necesitamos estas leyes. Nuestro trabajo debe tener los mismos derechos que otros trabajos.
It's very important that this happens because everybody needs to know the new law, and that is also true for domestic workers. They need to be able to have these protections as well.
Es todo. Muchas gracias por su apoyo.
This is it. This is it. Thank you so very much for your help, and have a good night. Pues gracias, señora Agüeta, y lo siento porque estoy tratando en el momento, pero ojalá que todo el mundo entiende lo que dijiste. Gracias por su tiempo hoy.
Es todo muy bien. Gracias.
Okay, thank you. I said, "Thank you very much, Miss Agüeta, for your time today." I'm trying in the moment to provide translation, but I hope that everybody got the general sense of what she was saying. So thank you for bearing with me. And thank you very much, señora Agüeta. Okay, Evan, I see you listed as next, and thanks for being ready.
Hi, my name is Evan Gerthoffer. I'm a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Union Local 46. I live in District Three. I'm a renter. I work in Seattle, and I'm a member of a group, Union for Black Lives Matter, that includes rank-and-file pledge membership, who wants to express that working people are in solidarity and support for the Black Lives Matter movement. People from all walks of life are speaking up loud and clear that the city council needs to address the issues facing our BIPOC neighbors, our houseless neighbors, and every working person in Seattle. City council needs to support the solidarity budget and direct community involvement in the funds that we will be redistributing once SPD's bloated budget has been defunded by at least 50%. SPD does not keep the people of this city safe. They have brutalized the most vulnerable people of our city for years, and in the past year have brutalized anyone and everyone willing to make their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. The next three people are Carrie Cooley-Strom, Sharon Hemel, and Sheridan Grant. Sheridan, I see you listed as not present, so just dial in if you get the chance. Carrie, good evening. And star six, unmute yourself. Hey, Carrie, I see you listed as still muted on my end. If you can hit star six one more time. Okay, I'm going to come back to you, Carrie. We're going to go to number 112, which is Sharon. Good evening, Sharon. Hey, Sharon, I see you also as still muted on our end. So Sharon and Carrie, star six, unmute. Okay. Sharon, I'm going to come back to you as well. If you have any technical issues, please go ahead and email us. And the next person we have is Norman Webb. Norman, good evening. I see you are unmuted. Can you hear us?
This is Norman Webb.
Excellent. Hi, Norman. Please go ahead.
Okay, good. I'm Norman Webb, and I'm in District Four. I support a request for the report on 911 response times because I'm concerned that changes in the police department may adversely affect response time to 911 calls. I had a stroke in 2016, and my wife called 911 immediately. Responders came within minutes. I was in the hospital shortly. Because of the quick response, I now have only few side effects to the stroke. I believe 911 response time is very important to the health and safety for all residents. Before the council takes action that may have an impact on 911 calls, I think it's critical that you get some information on what the impact of such action will be. We live in emotional times, I know that, but action by our leaders should be based on reason and decision-making, sound decision-making. This requires making some effort on the study and impact of potentially far-reaching and critical actions. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your testimony tonight. Before we go further, I want to note we have Carrie Cooley-Strom and Sharon Hemel. We were having a little time... A hard time getting you unmuted. So before we go ahead, Carrie, I see you up there. Just still says you're muted. If you could do star six one more time for us. Okay. Sorry, Carrie, for the... For the delay here. Sharon, do you want to try and push star six? And let me see if I can get you teed up. Oh, great. It's working for you, Sharon. And why don't we keep Carrie listed there so that we can see if they come unmuted as well? Why don't you go ahead, Sharon? Thanks for waiting. Okay, after all that, I don't hear you. If you could check your phone to see if it's muted on your own device, too. Sharon, can you hear me? Okay. I know Sharon's there.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
That's okay. Hi, Sharon. Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
I know. You've been waiting a long time. We didn't want to keep going, so thanks for waiting. Go ahead.
Well, I'm Sharon Hemel, and I am a 30-year resident of District Two, and I am here in support of the essential role of libraries in our community. And that, you know, a lot of what has been said tonight just shows that a valuable role the library can play. We thank all the council members for their enthusiastic support of the library. And as you know, Seattleites love their libraries, and we appreciate all your efforts to preserve quality programs in the branches for all the residents, and in particular for those most in need and those historically left out. You know, I mean, we're essential to a healthy and equitable city. We're supportive of increasing the budget so that... The mayor's proposed budget so that we can support the library's financial needs as we open and provide safe services at our branches. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And let's try one more time with Carrie. Carrie, if you can hear me, still shows you as muted, just star six. As we wait to see if Carrie's line comes unmuted, the next three speakers are Dee Powers, Chris Ingersoll, and Joey McAllister. Dee and Chris, it shows you are not present, so please do dial in, and we'll come back to you. Carrie, I hate to move on because I know you've been waiting for a while, and it shows you as still listed as present. So Carrie, if you want to email our office, we are happy to help troubleshoot or the email that you got as a note for signing up for public testimony today. Okay, let's go to Joey. Good evening, Joey.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Joey McAllister. I live at the brand-new Nicholsville Central District Tiny House Village. Nicholsville supports the people's budget and would like to thank councilmembers Sawant for including small grassroots organizations for funding. Nicholsville was the first organization to implement the tiny house concept. We are self-managed in a democratically-run system here. Diversity in encampments will help the growing need to house everyone instead of all the tiny house villages. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Patricia Hayden, Chris Anderson, and Reed Olson. Chris and Reed, we see you listed as not present, so please do dial in, and we'll get to you. Patricia, good evening. Just star six, unmute yourself. And after Patricia, if we don't hear from Chris or Reed, we will go to Stefan Gross, Craig Anderson, and John Grant. Patricia, hi.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. I'm Patricia Hayden, the chief program officer of the YDVCA and co-chair of the Seattle Human Services Coalition. SHSC is recommending applying the framework for revisiting the city's budget with new priorities to focus on equitable recovery that includes sustaining community and health and human services. We fully support the city council's creating jumpstart progressive revenue source while also making important new investments. We also urge council to restore proposed cuts to services like expanded legal defense network and the statewide poverty action network. We feel that council can go further to work towards structural changes by divesting institutional responses that harm communities and invest in more supportive responses. And finally, we urge city council to take the counsel of Black-led community organizations for the good of the entire community and put further steps in place in 2021 than those outlined by the mayor's proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling in. The next person who's present is Stefan Gross, number 121. Hello, Stefan.
Hello. My name is Stephen Gross, and I'm a renter in District Three. I believe it is time to invest in equity. I support at least a 50% divestment in SPD and allocation of those funds to support Black and Brown communities, as well as for the decriminalization of homelessness and offering support to the homeless community in Seattle. Mayor Jenny Durkin's proposed plan is an insult to the people of Seattle, and it is time for the council to move forward in support of all the communities in Seattle, not just those that profit from the status quo. Increase the tax on Amazon, other large corporations, and the rich. I support the people's budget, Seattle's Green New Deal, and the solidarity budget. Black Lives Matter. I yield my time.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And the next person is Craig Anderson. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening. My name is Craig Anderson. I'm 65 years old. I live in Cher Indoor Shelter. Cher supports the people's budget and the solidarity budget. Cher also supports the Hope Team, Black Lives Matter, and defunding SPD by at least 50%. I'd like to thank councilmember Sawant for her authorship of these budget actions. Number one, please increase the number of tiny house villages, and please fund Cher's Tent City Three. Two, help Cher indoor shelters stay open 24 hours so we don't have to go back to nights only. In my shelter, 60% of the residents are over 60 years old, too old to be walking the streets or clogging the public libraries. Cher needs 24-hour shelters to keep our members safe and healthy. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for calling in tonight. And John, good evening.
Good evening, members of the City Council Budget Committee. My name is Christopher Anderson. I'm at Cher's bunkhouse. As you've heard, Cher supports the people's budget and the solidarity budget. We also support the Hope Team, not sweeps done by teams that include police or city workers. Thanks again, councilmembers Sawant, for the two budget actions we focused on tonight. First, for increasing encampments and tiny house villages in Seattle and funding Cher's Tent City Three. I'd like to thank councilmember Morales and Lewis for co-signing. Second, the assistance given to Cher's indoor shelters allowing them 24/7, as you've heard, has helped greatly. Thank you from councilmembers Morales and Gonzalez for co-signing this, and the councilmember Hribble for your concern on indoor shelters during the COVID crisis and beyond. City council support for an estimated $100,000 to renovate. A hygiene center would bring online a much-needed commercial washer and dryer, showers, and hygiene supplies. We've worked as a coalition partners to help jumpstart the tax Amazon source of city funding that the city is now lucky to have. Hopefully, this council can see these requests are meaningful allocations that better the daily lives of those struggling with homelessness in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. And then we'll hear from John, and then we'll go back to Carrie and Reed. So, John, please go ahead. John, one more time on star six. Okay, there you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is John Grant. I'm a District Two resident. I'm here with Wellspring Family Services, calling in regards to the rapid rehousing crisis in terms of funding. I have one of our families on the line, and I wanted to turn over so that she could provide her testimony. Her name is Gracia Guzmán. So, Gracia, why don't you go ahead?
Hello, council members. My name is Gracia Guzmán Caranda, and I live with my family in Skyway. We moved into our apartment through Wellspring's rapid rehousing in May after two years in a car with family and a poor-conditioned trailer and shelters. We're here to support Wellspring's and Solid Ground's rent assistance proposals for rapid rehousing families. Staying in a shelter at the beginning of COVID with two kids and several respiratory issues really worsened by mental health. It took three months longer than we expected to find a place because of offices being closed due to COVID, making it hard to talk to these people, and looking at units. It was also harder to find work between my spouse and I. One of us was out of a job for almost a month, and the other one was working only part-time. But Wellspring stayed...
Let's keep the time going for them since they were a group. Okay. Thank you so much, John. And if you could have your team send the rest of the public testimony, that would be great. Okay, let's go back to...
I, councilmember, we're...
Oh, you're still there. Okay, go ahead. Just a few more seconds. I didn't realize that we had two of you on the line, so we want to give you another few seconds to wrap up her testimony.
Thank you so much. Gracia, please continue.
It was also hard to find work between both of us. One of us was only working part-time, and the other one didn't have work at all. But rapid rehousing helped us pay for our moving costs and a few months of rent that helped us stay out of crisis and keep us, you know, getting to our jobs. Without rapid rehousing, we'd still be unhoused. This has been a difficult journey. Sometimes I wanted to give up, but with the structure and support rapid rehousing gave us, we've been able to keep moving forward. Thank you so kindly for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, to reorient, folks, we're going to go to Carrie, who we called earlier number 111. Reed, number 120, and then we will continue. The three people after Reed will be Yolanda Matthews, Hannah Lake, and Andrew Constantino, who we also have as not listed as present. So please do dial in, Andrew. Okay, going back to Carrie. Carrie, thank you for your patience. Let's get back to you, and you have the floor. Just star six, unmute yourself. Okay, Carrie, I see you still muted on our end. Okay, Carrie, I see you still muted on our end. I'm sorry to miss ya, please do feel free to send us a message if you get back in. Um, Reed, please go ahead, thanks for waiting. And Reed, it shows you as muted still on my end as well, if you want to hit star six one more time, I saw you, there we go, hi there.
Hi, hello, council. My name is Reed Olson, and I live in District Two, and I'm calling to support solidarity budget, and I urge you to divest from S P D by at least fifty percent and support the distribution of funds divested from S P D through a participatory budget process. I'm asking that you make sure that investments in black communities and community-led healthcare and safety come from funds divested from the police. Just over a year ago, I was violently attacked by a stranger. In my moment of need, I was kept alive by friends and paramedics. Police cannot be expected to prevent violence. At such a moment of great need in a real world where real people live and die, where I have watched the police behave more like my attacker than keepers of the peace, please, I beg of you all to defund the police by fifty percent and invest in communities and the living, breathing people of Seattle for a more peaceful and just world. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thanks for calling in tonight. Uh, the next person we have is Yolanda, good evening, Yolanda. Hey, Yolanda, thanks so much for being here.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yolanda Matthews, I'm a resident of District Two, an organizer with Puget Sound Sage, and we support the solidarity budget for 2021. I'm calling to urge you to divest from S P D by minimum fifty percent and support distribution of funds divested from S P D through a participatory budgeting process. I'm also asking that you please extend the hiring freeze of the S P D into 2021, and that if police quit or retire to not support investments to replace them. As it stands currently in our society, police do not create public safety, they create cop- chaos and provoke violence, as evidenced once again by the senseless killing of another young black known mentally ill man in Philadelphia just last night. I call on all members of this city council, Seattle City Council, to be the example of change that not only Seattle needs, but that this country is literally burning for. The one hundred million promised by the mayor of, by the mayor for black communities should come from the city's policing budget to truly invest in black communities like Africa Towns Community Land Trust and community-led health and safety. Funds should be divested from police prosecutors and courts, not from jumpstart Seattle funds or other city funds. We ask that you support common sense measures that care for our communities rather than policing and-
Excellent, thank you, Yolanda. Hannah, good evening.
Hi, I'm Hannah Lake, and I live at Northlake Nickleville. Um, I support Shama's bill to fund self-managed homeless encampments and tiny house villages with eight hundred thousand dollars. Self-management gives people a sense of dignity and responsibility that they can carry over into their lives and in permanent housing. Um, thank you council members to want for proposing this bill, it would help us so very much, and it would help all the people that, well, not all the people, but many people that are struggling outside right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Andrew Constantino, we have you listed as not present, so please do dial in. The next three speakers are Annie Capulia, Carl Furnier, and Michelle Lucas, those are numbers one twenty-seven, one twenty-eight, and one twenty-nine. Good evening, Annie.
Hi, um, good evening, members of the city council budget committee, my name is Annie Capula. I live at shares University Ulu. Share supports the people's budget and the solidarity budget. We also, uh, sweeps any team that includes police or city workers going out into encampments and shutting them down. Thank you, councilperson Suwatt, for authorizing two budget actions we are focused on tonight. One is to increase encampments and tiny house villages in Seattle and fund shares tent city three. Thank you, councilperson Morales and Lewis for co-signing this. The other is to help shares indoor shelters stay open twenty-four seven so they don't go back into nighttime only. Thank you, councilperson Morales and Gonzalez for co-signing this. Andrew, councilperson Hubble for your concern for the future of the shelter and the age of COVID and beyond. And my main points tonight are COVID, uh, being in half-capacity, six feet apart, we simply need more real estate, uh, especially with rent and foreclosures going on. Uh, designated areas specifically for tents, tiny houses, and encampments instead of random tents and people on the streets. Twenty-four hour indoor-
Thank you very much, Annie. Carol, good evening. Hey, Carol, we see you as muted on our end still, if you want to hit star six one more time. Great, hi there.
Hello. Hi, is, uh, what, what name did you call, please?
Hey, Anitra, we called Carol, um, Fornier.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, do I have your name? Yeah.
Wonderful, hi Carol, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, um, uh, my name is Carol Forni, and I stay at the, uh, Wheel Woman Shelter at Trinity Episcopal Parish, and I am asking for your support for budget item number nineteen, so that our shelter and those of our brothers and sisters and share can continue twenty-four hour operation through 2021.
Just go straight to that part.
And then, uh, having shelter around the clock, I'm seventy-seven years old, and, uh, this, uh, shelter is a, is a woman's, uh, shelter, a twenty-four hour shelter. It means, uh, being able to rest for me and eat in peace, and get some good food in. Oh, is it over?
Yeah.
Oh.
You can keep going, there's a few more seconds.
Okay, in a community with friends, uh, who are watching out for myself and each other, and, uh, I feel like I'm getting my life back, please don't send me and my friends back outside. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you for, thank you very much, Carol. Appreciate your time tonight. Good evening, Michelle, you are next.
Thank you, council members. My name is Michelle Lucas and I'm the directing attorney of the Tenant Law Center, a renter and a D three resident. The mayor's budget cuts two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from eviction prevention funds, and I urge the council to increase or at least maintain this amount. We're thankful for the council's support in the past, but we're in the middle of an unprecedented housing crisis now. The funds being cut support legal aid attorneys who keep families in their homes. It supports partnerships among organizations providing tenant info sessions in multiple languages because everyone has a right to understand the laws that protect them. Maintaining these funds is a race equity issue. We know that COVID nineteen more drastically impacts communities of color. This funding allows programs like the Tenant Law Center to provide targeted assistance to those most in need, most often our BIPOC community members. Having a roof over our heads is a right, not a privilege, and too often it requires legal representation or advocacy to protect this most basic human need. People who are unable to pay their rent are certainly, certainly unable to pay for an attorney, and we're awaiting an inevitable flood of evictions when the moratorium lifts. Because of this, we urge the council to increase or maintain the funding for eviction prevention services. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. The next person is Ansley Mayo, then Susan Heff and Karen Bo, along with Ronaldo Sims. For Ronaldo and Karen, numbers thirty-three, uh, one thirty-three and one thirty-two, we show you as listed as not present, so please do dial in. Until then, let's hear from Ansley Mayo, number one thirty.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Great, um, my name is Ansley Mayo, um, and I'm a resident in District Six. Um, and I'm calling today to ask you to reject the American's proposed budget, um, and change it to better reflect the demands of the solidarity budget. Um, first I want to echo what we've seen for countless protests in Seattle, not that you keep the promise of defunding at least fifty percent from the police. Um, we've seen again and again that police systems hurt people and don't provide them the resources they need. Uh, furthermore, policing doesn't and hasn't improved public safety for most of the population. Um, instead of funding a system that isn't working, we should be pouring money and resources into communities. Um, we need real publicity that's focused on the whole range of people. Um, I urge you to get rid of the narrow drinking team and relocate the police instead, um, and do this through participatory budgeting, and funding this money needs to come from the defunding of the jumping tax. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you calling in. Um, and the next person is Susan, good evening, Susan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Susan, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Susan Health, I'm a homeowner in District Six, Dan Strauss's district, a member of three fifty dot org, the Transit Riders Union, and most recently the Ballard Community Task Force on homelessness and hunger. I support the solidarity budget, defunding the police by at least fifty percent, and taxing Amazon. Tonight I am speaking on behalf of those living in those, in their vehicles, who make up half the people counted as unsheltered in the city of Seattle. This group includes elderly people and families waiting to get into family shelter. When the ban on rental evictions expires next year, many more homeless people will resort to living in their vehicles, and the crisis will deepen. The Tax Force's scofflaw mitigation team provides outreach to vehicle residents, helps them pay tickets and get their vehicles repaired, and guides them toward resources. We support renewing the one hundred thousand dollar funding for this project with the 2021 budget. Instead of punishing those living in the vehicles, their vehicles, the city should support them by providing safe off-street locations for vehicles on surplus city property and church parking lots, as well as basic amenities like public toilets, hand washing stations, and garbage, garbage pickup. Until we provide real housing for everyone, this is an important option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time, um, and for waiting on the line. So folks, we are at number one, uh, thirty-two, Karen Bo, and I called Ronaldo Sims, one thirty-three, thanks for dialing in, Rolando, and, um, after that, we are going to take a break. Uh, so I want to tee folks up to, um, note that we're gonna take our, uh, ten to fifteen-minute break after Ronaldo speaks, and if you are waiting to testify and you have a number that is beyond a hundred and thirty-four, please dial in during our break so that we have you ready and queued up, ready to go. Rolando, let's turn it over to you. And just star six to unmute yourself. There you go. Hello.
Hi, this is Rolando Sims with Cher. I got just one comment, like, so we thank you for the support, and we need, and we, that's pretty much I have to say is, is we just need more support outside, from outside.
Well, perfect, thank you so much, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, well, hope you have a good night, thanks for your comments tonight. Folks, we are going, yeah, we're going to stay, um, with everybody on the public line, please stay on the whole online. We do need to give our team a few minutes to reset and have a break. Uh, we will reconvene at eight forty-five, and we will start again, uh, with, uh, the next three speakers, Carolyn Atkinson, Diana Kwan, and Emma Cooper Smith. Um, again, uh, please do take a, uh, break, and we will reconvene after eight forty-five. Thank you so much.[1433.22] Testimony comments. And I want to start again with a reminder that we have about 100 more people to get through. So, we are going to endeavor to get through everyone who is present. And there are two people that are listed as still present who we called their names a few times, and I'm going to see if we can get our, our teams to email the folks directly for those two names that were listed above, who we called earlier, Carrie Cooley and Doris Garcia. If, if someone from my office could send them a quick note in the emails that they used to register, just to make sure that they're not still on the line waiting to be called, that would be great. Okay. As a reminder, we are going to reconvene our recessed public hearing. We will begin again with number 134, who is Carolyn Atkinson, followed by Diana Kwan, and then Emma Cooper Smith, who we still see listed as not present. Carolyn, I want to thank you for waiting as we took a much-needed break, given this is going to go for at least four hours. We appreciate your time tonight. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Atkinson, a renter in District C, a childcare worker, a regular person who lives in the city, and a volunteer with 350 and the Sunrise Movement. I support the solidarity budget. We need a livable, just, and climate-adapted Seattle free of police harassment and full of accessible housing and services. There is no reason to play the mayor's cruel game to pit Seattleites against each other with the proposed budget. The council should stand by your commitment to defund SPD by 50%. That is the way to fund $100 million of participatory budgeting. The crises of 2020 were preventable. The crises of 2025 and 2030 are preventable too. And we need the city council to not waste time and resources circling back to a dangerously obsolete and racist status quo, and we need to instead lead, let Seattle lead and show what it means to be a 21st-century city by pursuing an aggressive Green New Deal and fully funding vital services. We have the money. It's up to the council to take it from SPD like it was promised and create real public security. I yield my time.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Diana Kwan, you are up next. Thanks for waiting. Hi, Diana.
Hi. Hi. My name is Diana Kwan. I'm a renter in District Seven and a member of UAW 4121. I'm speaking to you today in strong support of solidarity budget. First, the budget must defund the SPD by at least 50% and reinvest these funds in Black communities and community-led health and safety systems. Second, the money divested from police and the money promised by Mayor Durkin must be allocated through participatory budgeting, not a task force handpicked by the mayor. Third, the revenue from Jump Start Seattle should remain dedicated to COVID-19 relief, affordable housing, and Green New Deal investments. The money promised should come from divestments from the city's policing budgets. Finally, I strongly urge the city council to extend the hiring freeze for the SPD into 2021. As a BIPOC trainee in clinical psychology, I strongly believe we deserve a budget that prioritizes true public safety solutions, not reactive policing that introduces violence to our communities and perpetuates white supremacy. Those closest to the problems are closest to the solutions, so it is time we uplift and fund solutions from Seattle's BIPOC leaders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Emma Cooper Smith, we see you as next, number 136, but it shows you are not present. Do dial in and we'll get back to you. Next person is Matthew Farrell, then Leah Salerno, and then Daniel McCraw. Good evening, Matthew. Just star six to unmute. Perfect. Thanks for joining us.
Hey there. Thanks. Good evening. My name is Matthew. I'm a resident from D6 in Ballard. Calling tonight in support of the solidarity budget, and I want to speak directly to Council Member Strauss. As a member of the community, I was horrified by the police department's response to the peaceful and urgent protests in support of Black lives this summer. So, I ask you to follow through on the pledge you made to defund SPD by 50% at least. That was really encouraging to hear at the time, and I've been hopeful since then that our city will be a leader in a nation that desperately needs to make amends for our racist institutions. It matters very much where the investments in Black communities come from, though. That money should not come from the Jump Start tax. It should come from the police and judicial system, which have been directly responsible for perpetuating the wealth gap between Black and white neighborhoods for ages. So, thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for representing me, but please remember also that it's our duty as privileged people to represent those who do not have a voice. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next person is Leah. Good evening, Leah.
Hello. My name is Leah Salerno. I am a resident living in District Five. I am also speaking as a representative of Disability Rights Washington, which has signed on to the solidarity budget and calls to defund SPD by at least 50% and to reinvest those funds in communities through a participatory budgeting process. We call on the city council to expand the duress defense and the de minimis ordinance. Expanding the language is a good step in the direction of not only saving the city money on unneeded prosecutions, but also towards decriminalizing mental illness. Prosecuting and keeping those with mental illness in jail costs an exorbitant amount of money, and during this time, they are not receiving the health care and supports that they need. Jail is not and cannot be transformed into a therapeutic environment. Expanding the language as proposed would save the city money by avoiding wasteful and harmful prosecutions that only serve as a barrier to true public safety and is an important part of the budget. The money saved by expanding the duress and de minimis language and stopping these prosecutions should be reinvested in true community safety by supporting all of the demands of the solidarity budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Daniel. Good evening, Daniel. Just double-checking. Daniel McCraw, we have you listed as not present currently, so we will come back to you if you get back online. The next three speakers I'm going to read are listed as not present. Daniel Kavanaugh, Julia Griffith, and Sarah Starman. If you are interested in still providing public testimony, please dial in to the public testimony line. The next three speakers that I have as present are Robert Lowe, Jamie Stephens, and Mira Ajam. Robert, good evening and thanks for being with us.
Hello. Good evening, members of the City Council Budget Committee. My name is Robert Lowe. I'm currently, I just became homeless, and I am living at one of Cher's 24-hour shelters out in Presbyterian, out in Ballard. It's a new Presbyterian church run by Cher. Cher supports the people's budget and solidarity budget. We also support the Hope Team. Also, come before you this evening, I want to thank you, Councilperson Swann, for authorizing the two budget actions we are focused on this evening. One of those is to increase the encampments and tiny house villages in Seattle and fund Cher 10-City 3. Thank you, Councilperson Morales and Lewis for co-signing this. The other is to help to keep indoor Cher open 24/24/7. I'm 55 years old, and as other people that are my age, we can't be walking around. We're clean, we're sober. We can't be walking around on the streets out in the cold all day. We need a place to go. Also, I want to thank you, Councilperson Morales and Gonzalez for co-signing this, and Councilperson Herbold for your concern for the future of our shelters in the age of COVID and beyond. I want to say thank you for letting me speak this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you for being here this evening. Jamie, good evening, Jamie. Thank you for waiting.
Hi.
Hi there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. My name is Jamia Stephens. I've, I've worked at Plymouth Housing for a few years on the property management side, and now I'm in the Social Services Provider Academy through Seattle Central College. By getting training in human services, mental health, and other professional skills, I'm able to do my job better and advance in my career. It has really opened my eyes and helped me better understand the needs and challenges of the people we work with at Plymouth, who've experienced homelessness. I think that continuing to fund programs like SSBA should be a priority for the city to educate people in social services because the city is building a lot of supportive housing right now. So, you'll need to invest in employees to work in those buildings such as homeless. Please support this. For all the people who are working on the front lines of supportive housing, invest in this so we can make Seattle an even better city for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next person that we have is Mira Ajam. Good evening, Mira.
Good evening. My name is Mira Ajam, and I'm a resident of District Three. I'm calling today in absolute support of the solidarity budget, which has the following demands. Number one, defund the Seattle Police Department by at least 50% and extend the hiring freeze. Two, allocate funds from police divestments for Black communities using a true participatory budgeting process, including the $100 million promised by Mayor Durkin. Three, preserve vital public services. Do not source funding from the vital public services such as Jump Start Seattle, but rather from the city's policing budget. Four, allocate the funds that have been dedicated to the navigation team to fund trusted community organizations to work with people who are homeless without the presence of police and without coercion. Five, fund staff position within the Office of Sustainability and Environment to support the GND Oversight Board in work planning and funding allocation. Six, expand the duress defense to curb the criminalization of poverty and mental health struggles. And lastly, fund the New Africa Town Affordable Housing Project on Yesterway. I have listened for hours as countless of my fellow Seattle residents called in support of the solidarity budget. Please consider the request of the people to defund the police. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. The next three people that I see as present are number 151, Brent Bartlett, Andrea Bernard, and Lauren Esprum. Looking forward to hearing from all of you. And just a reminder to Daniel McCraw, Daniel Kavanaugh, Julia Griffith, and Sarah Starman, we did not see you listed as present, and we've passed your number, but we're happy to come back to you if you dial in. Good evening, Brent. Thanks for waiting and looking forward to hearing from you. It looks like we might have just put you back on mute. Could you hit star six one more time? Perfect.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. My name is Brent Bartlett, and I'm a renter in District Four. I'm calling to urge you to reject Mayor Durkin's austerity plan and adopt the solidarity budget. Also, raise the Amazon tax to fund new affordable housing, libraries, parks, roads, and community centers. Also, defund the police by at least 50% to fund community-led programs and affordable housing. We also need an independent elected community oversight board with the ability to hire and fire police officers. This is a remedy to bring accountability to these public servants. I also think we need to increase tiny house villages and encampments so that our homeless neighbors have shelter. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. Andrea, good evening. Thanks for waiting.
Hello. My name is Andrea, and I'm a parent of a Seattle Public School student and a resident of District Five, represented by Councilmember Waters. I'm also a rank-and-file member of Local 30 Union Carpenters, and I'm honored to have worked on sound transit expansions, as well as volunteered with tiny house villages. I support Decriminalize Seattle's Anti-Racist Blueprint, especially that Seattle divests at least 50% from SPD. With these recouped funds and those from Jump Start, absolutely zero cuts should be made to services for the most vulnerable and the most targeted by colonial capitalism. I urge our council to please seize this critical opportunity to focus our funds on Black, Indigenous, and communities of color, and on resilient, deeply democratic Commonwealth in the face of increasing climate change crises. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Lauren, good evening.
Hello. My name is Lauren Ephraim of Freedom Project Washington, and as a resident of District Two, I care deeply about my community. I am here to ask you to expand the duress defense and the de minimis language in the Seattle Municipal Code so that people experiencing the trauma of poverty, mental health complications, and substance use disorders can avoid convictions which only cause them further harm. We need to take measures that reflect their humanity and provide the care and support they deserve. I also ask you to approve the solidarity budget and divest from the SPD and redistribute the funds through a participatory budgeting process. Invest in Black and Indigenous communities instead of policing prosecutors in courts. Preserve vital public services. Stop criminalizing homelessness. Fund the Green New Deal Oversight Board staffed by youth and low-income community members and provide COVID-19 economic relief. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So, folks, I do see that our earlier speakers, Carrie and Doris, are still present. We did have a hard time getting them off of mute, so I'm going to call on them after these next three speakers. Dory and Carrie, we're going to come back to you one more time to try to unmute you before we move on. Okay. So, the next three speakers that I have as present are Sonia Sivinson, Ellie Brondi, and Emily Graham. Sonia, thanks for being with us.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time. My name is Sonia Sivinson. I am a business owner in District One, and I am one of the 100 people on the call tonight and thousands in our beautiful city, calling to urge you to divest from SPD by a minimum of 50% and support the distribution of funds divested from the Seattle Police Department through a participatory budgeting process. Like so many on this call are saying, police do not create public safety. And we all know the best way to create and guarantee public safety is to meet people's basic needs and build out other ways of responding to harm in our community. And we have so many brilliant resources and research and experts in our communities who have so many brilliant resources and research and experts in our communities who are leading the way in this. And I'm asking you to create a budget that will reflect a city that works for all of us and that elevates Black lives. It's time to dismantle anti-Black racist policing. It's time to invest in dignified shelter, affordable housing, vital public services, COVID economic relief, the Green New Deal for Seattle, and a healthy future for all of us. So please divest by at least 50%, like you promised, and hold accountable the mayor and the city. And let's let Seattle lead the country in what is actually possible, another world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Ellie, good evening.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I reside at Nicholsville Northlake Tiny House Village. I read about the plans of bringing back the navigation team. It has not worked in the past. Please reevaluate this strategy, especially during a pandemic that is going to force more people to become homeless. The navigation team should be made up of more than 50% of the people who can relate because they have lived it. Support grassroots organizations such as Nicholsville. We need more self-managed tiny house villages. It is the best way to keep homeless people safe during the winter months and this pandemic. Northlake has made it so that I am able to focus on starting a new job. If I were on the streets, this would not be possible. As a domestic violence survivor, I feel safe here. As a side note, please figure out a way to make our hearing impaired feel included. Seattle should be more inclusive for all. Black Lives Matter and I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Emily Graham, good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks for checking.
Great. My name is Emily Graham and I am a renter and community member in District 3 and also a member of Sunrise Seattle. I am calling in support of the solidarity budget and to urge the City Council to divest from SPD by at least 50% and to designate at least $100 million of that money to be distributed through participatory budgeting processes within Seattle's Black community. I'm also calling to insist that the $100 million not be pulled away from Jumpstart funds designated for Seattle's Green New Deal and that the recipients of that money not be determined by a task force handpicked by Jenny Durkin, a mayor who has repeatedly ignored the request of the Black community. I would also like to request that significant investments be made to improve community access to dignified, self-managed housing groups for Seattle's unsheltered population. Over the summer, the City Council voted to disband the navigation team, the police task force assigned to uproot homeless folks. The money that would have been spent on the navigation team should be used to give our homeless community access to adequate sanitation services and especially to single-room housing options given the coronavirus pandemic. I'm only represented by a few of you on the City Council, but I encourage all of the City Councils to think of the positive change that you are capable of creating with this budget. We have the chance to take steps towards a stronger community and a more equitable Seattle with this budget. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go back up to those two speakers, Doris and Carrie. As you are unmuting, star six, I want to remind the following speakers that we called your name and you are listed as not present. Julia Griffith, Sarah Starman, Andrea Carnes, Alan Wallace, you are listed as not present, Andrew Bennett, you are also listed as not present. Doris, do we have you with us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yay! Thanks for waiting, Doris. Okay, we got you.
Thank you. Two hours later than I was called, but yay, we made it. Thank you very much, councilmembers. My name is Doris Garcia and I am here to stand solidarity with King County Equity Now, the Clumery of Seattle Black leaders in our community and to ask this council to divest from policing and invest in Black communities. As you will know, many domestic workers in your city have been organizing for over two years to pass a domestic worker bill of rights that support their rights. And I know as a former domestic worker myself, we in our city, we're counting on you, our City Council, to honor your commitment to undoing injustice that have been at the struggle for racial justice and economic justice. Also asking you to continue your investment and full support in the Seattle Domestic Workers Standards Board. I have witnessed myself firsthand how this amazing board provides a space that ensures domestic workers' opinions and are the front and center in conversations that will directly impact them. We must invest in enforcement and continue to improve labor standards.
Doris, it's great to hear from you. Thank you so much for your testimony tonight. Okay, let's go to Carrie. Carrie, can you hear me now? And do we have star six? Awesome. You there, Carrie?
Thanks for your patience, Chair Muskata.
No problem.
And good evening, councilmembers. I'm Carrie Julie Strom with Catholic Community Services, living in District 3. And I'm speaking in support of the recently launched Social Services Provider Academy at Seattle Central College, where all the students are frontline employees in housing and homeless services. Our frontline employees serve our growing numbers of homeless clients struggling with instability, significant trauma, and mental and physical health challenges. Theirs is a career calling that requires meeting clients where they are with great compassion and skill. These valued employees do deserve access and opportunities to advance their careers and income. However, many of our higher-level positions require professional experience and higher education, both historically limited by structural racism and economic barriers. The result is more white folks in positions of leadership while frontline staff are more often Black, Indigenous, and people of color. The Social Services Provider Academy, a partnership with Seattle Central and housing and homeless services organizations, is a response to entrench barriers in equity. We're seeking support from the city to fund this innovative program.
Well, that's excellent. Thank you so much. Carrie, thanks for being with us tonight. All right, let's continue. We are on number 159. We Lowe, Andrew Bennett, and Sharon Park. Andrew, we still see you listed as not present, so we will go back to you if you call in. Wei, thanks for joining us.
Hi, my name is Wei and I'm a tech worker and resident of District 7 in solidarity with King County Equity Now. Supporting Black lives goes beyond defunding institutions like the Seattle Police Department. I ask that all councilmembers, particularly my rep, Andrew Lewis, to support Councilmember Morales's proposal to invest in identity-affirming programming and funding restorative justice. I also ask that you expand the duress defense and de minimis ordinance. No one should be convicted of a crime if they are trying to meet a basic need or struggling with mental health or drug use at the time. Lack of access to resources is not a crime. Mental health is not a crime. Being unhoused is not a crime. Protesting is not a crime. We've seen time and time again that the police do not prevent or discourage crime. We need to dismantle this racist institution filled with non-Seattleites and instead support and expand the community coalitions that have been active through this entire pandemic and process. We need a 2021 budget that reflects our city's values and the people's needs. Defund SPD by 50%. Support the solidarity budget. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Sharon, good evening. After Sharon, we're going to go back up to Daniel McCraw. Hey, Sharon.
Hello. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I'm unmuted.
You are good. We can hear you.
Oh, awesome. Great, thank you. My name is Sharon and I'm a resident of District 3. First, thank you, central staff, for making the budget proceedings clear and easy to follow along. It's been very helpful. And thank you, council, for dedicating this time to hear out the public. Councilmember Strauss, you've asserted several times that our elected officials need to make decisions based on policy, not politics, and I couldn't agree more. Unfortunately, with the unveiling of Mayor's budget proposal, it's disheartening to have to point out that clearly Mayor Durkin's decisions have been motivated precisely by politics. The searing discrepancy between her public facing words versus her actions is evidenced in her move to cut that $30 million strategic investment fund. It's alarming to learn that her promise of $100 million to BIPOC essentially relies on her failure to fulfill a similar promise she made a year ago. Further, the mayor's process is not only duplicative of the major work that council has done over the spring and summer. It dismembers critical bodies of issues into various workgroups and task forces that maintain the status quo and is not directly answerable to the community. Her interdepartmental team plans a looking to the Center for Policing Equity, which houses the most comprehensive data in the world on disparities in policing. But what does it tell us when Philip Goss, the founder and CEO of this data center, says that racist policing is a universal fact? This fact is our baseline. We're past the point of reckoning and we now have to meet this critical juncture that calls on us to make.
Thank you so much. And Daniel McCraw, let's go back to you. Good evening. Just star six unmute. After Daniel, we're going to have Eli Goss, Kate Fleming, and Rachel Ludwig. Hey, Daniel, can you hear me? Star six unmute. Perfect.
Hey there. My name is Dan McCraw and I want to speak quickly on a few things I believe in strongly. One is that I deeply hope the council is in support of Share's system of indoor shelters being funded for 24/7 operations, which is still treated like it operates half of that time, though they have been overwhelmingly more responsive as a system of shelter, as a democratically-run self-management model that we should all philosophically find worthy of our ideals, and as a vastly inexpensive alternative to the more corporate mass shelter model of other shelters, in my opinion. I speak on this as someone who has firsthand seen the nuts and bolts, the realities of each model, and I can't tell you enough how much more humane, responsive, and true to our shared values as a community that the share model is and represents. Please also throw your support behind eight new tiny house villages and encampment support as Councilmember Sawant has put forth. I want to make sure to also state my strong support for the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget. These are brilliant possibilities once only we could daydream of, and now they are within grasp of being concretely achievable. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant especially. But to all those who help push this forward with their energies, time, and resources or abilities they are able to muster, you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Eli Goss, Kate Fleming, and Rachel Ludwig. Eli, good evening.
Hello. Yes, this is Eli Goss. I'm the Senior Policy Manager at One America. And first, I'd just like to start with a thank you and a gratitude around the funds set aside via the Jumpstart proposal to ensure our undocumented community members have access to financial assistance through the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. The program is going very well and I'd just like to extend a moment of just thank you and gratitude for that much-needed assistance. And however regarding proposed cuts via Mayor Durkin's proposal, is our concern with cuts to the immigrant legal defense fund. There is currently a cut proposed at $190,000 and that will result in cuts to services to many of our most vulnerable community members facing life-altering decisions in immigration courts here locally. So we're asking to maintain funding at the same level from the past two years at just $1 million. Any further cuts will result in the loss of clients and the promise of a solution to their pending cases. And as a welcoming city, we ask that we continue to have the well-being of our immigrant communities. And lastly, One America supports the acts of the solidarity budget and our enthusiastic supporters. Thank you.
Thanks, Eli. Kate, good evening.
Hello, my name is Kate Fleming. I'm a renter in Alex Peterson's District 4. I'm a social worker for the State of Washington and a member of the Washington Federation of State Employees Act me, Council 28. I'm here to express my support for the solidarity budget. I strongly urge you to divest from SPD by at least 50% and reinvest those funds into our BIPOC communities through participatory budgeting. The policing budget has grown grossly inflated, although we know that increased funding does not equal increased safety. These funds should instead be used to fund COVID relief, affordable housing, and Seattle's Green New Deal. I work with individuals with disabilities and we frequently use the phrase, "Nothing about us without us," to reinforce the fact that all decisions should be made by the communities and individuals who will be most deeply impacted by the effects. Nothing about us without us fits for our current budget crisis as well. We already know who will bear the brunt of the negative effects that will follow from the budget decisions that are currently on the table. These are our neighbors who are already facing the most systemic oppression and suffering the most during the COVID pandemic. Our BIPOC neighbors, our neighbors who are unhoused, our neighbors who have disabilities.
Thank you for your time tonight. Rachel, good evening.
Hello, my name is Rachel Ludwig. I live in District 2 and I also support the solidarity budget to cut the police budget by at least 50% and invest in participatory budgeting processes and of course, communities of Black, Indigenous, and other people of color. I want to talk a little bit about generations of people in Seattle who have actually never gotten to have their needs met and in many cases, their lives have been destroyed and especially including the people whose ancestors were here before any of the white colonists arrived. Our use of armed police and violence as a way to control communities has long been part of marginalizing poor, Black, Brown, and Indigenous people. At the time of the 1900s, at the turn of the 1900s, the police burned down the shanty towns that Black and Indigenous and Asian people were allowed to live in so the wealthy could make money on filled-in Elliott Bay tidelands. In the 2000s, the police ripped down tents and hassled the poor so the wealthy don't have to see their unhoused neighbors. The solidarity budget may seem like a huge dramatic shift to some, but if we consider the context of generations of harm, it's not anywhere enough. Please resist the solidarity budget and use this huge $400 million a year budget to spend it on something other than violent policing and invest in real community solutions that include everyone and meet everyone's real needs, not just the desires of the powerful and wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next person that we have is going to be Sudan, excuse me, Song, Patricia Allen, and Colleen McClear.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. I'm currently living in District 2. In my opinion, I think our mental health is not fine.
We lost you a little bit. Could you try to get closer to the speaker?
... struggling with mental illness or drug use. Many people do not understand why or how other people become addicted to drugs. People often mistakenly think that those who use drugs lack moral principles or willpower and that they could stop their drug use simply by choosing to. I urge our councilmembers to expand the duress defense so that a person is not convicted of the crime if they were trying to meet basic needs or struggling with mental health or drug use at the time of the offense. Additionally, I also urge our councilmembers to expand the de minimis ordinance so that the judge can dismiss the prosecution when a person is trying to meet a basic need or struggling with mental illness at the time of the offense. I am a believer that supporting Black Lives Matter means more than defunding Seattle Police Department and our city needs to spend our 2021 budget wisely. Lastly, I am also asking City Councilmembers to invest in community-based programs such as spending proper amount of funds to invest in programming for Black girls and young women as well as to fund our education and early learning to fund a restorative justice program for Seattle public schools. I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to stay with us, Sudan, and perhaps try that again. It was really hard to hear you. I had you turned up all the way on my end. So when we get through the next two speakers, I'm going to ask if you would be willing to repeat your testimony. Patricia Allen, Dick, we see you listed as not, I'm sorry, we see you listed as next. Please go ahead. And then we'll have Colleen McAller. Good evening, Patricia. Hey, Patricia, if you can hear me, just star six unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Oh, awesome. Hi, my name is Patricia Allen-Dick and I'm a coalition and community advocate for Chief Seattle Club. Colleen Echo Hawk sends her regrets and asked me to convey her messages tonight. Chief Seattle Club, we are here today to support our budget requests and ask that they remain in the final budget. Our request would add $1.6 million to expand day center services, eviction prevention, homelessness outreach, services for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, and a native reentry program. During COVID, we've remained open seven days a week while most downtown homeless agencies have temporarily closed or relocated. Our overall numbers have increased and we have served over 1,289 members. Our overall numbers have increased and we have served over 1,289 members from here to date. The club started new programs, especially such as our reentry program for the Native community as hundreds have been released from prisons and jails. In September, we started a domestic violence, sexual assault program to respond to our high unmet need during COVID-19. And this month, we hired an additional outreach worker to ensure we are reaching more natives at homelessness encampments. The need is there for additional outreach and we appreciate the efforts of City Council Member Lewis and others on reimagining the navigation team. We thank Councilmember Juarez and many of you who are co-sponsoring our request. Thank you. Goodest teesh. Heichka.
Thank you. Thanks for being present with us tonight. And then Colleen McAller. Good evening, Colleen. Just star six unmute yourself. Okay, Colleen, one more time. Star six unmute yourself. As she's doing that, I just wanna let folks know the next three speakers that we have are going to be Chris Ingersoll, Andrew Bennett, and then Ingrid Archibald. Chris will follow Colleen here. Hey, Colleen, you can still hear me. Just star six one more time to unmute. Okay, Chris, we're gonna go to Chris. Colleen will come back to you. I know we've gotten a lot of interest in making sure we hear from you since I can see you're still on the line, so please don't hang up. We will work with you on your technical issues to make sure we can hear you. Hi, Chris, can you hear me? Just star six unmute yourself. Looks like you're still muted on my end. Folks, I wish we didn't have the star six function. It is a function of Zoom and we cannot turn it off. We've tried.
This is Chris. Hello, hello.
Hey, Chris, thanks for waiting. Please go ahead.
I'm a member of the new Nicholsville Central District Tiny House Village. We just moved our camp. We did our own fundraising. We picked up our own houses with a forklift. We've set and leveled our own houses in the mud. It's a testament to our resilience and dedication. I'm speaking out in favor of Shama Sawant's Solidarity Budget. Giving Mayor Durkin and Lee Hy a monopoly and excluding organizations like Nicholsville eliminates people who, out of necessity, are working diligently to find solutions to the extremely difficult dilemma homelessness presents. Attacking this problem from all angles with more than one approach has to be the best way at this point, and Nicholsville most definitely deserves a seat at the table. I believe that Nicholsville, as much as anybody can and is, contributing to cost-effective and overall effective homelessness solutions with their tiny houses. Please, please, please include us in the budget. The only budget that includes us is the Solidarity Budget. Thank you, Shama Sawant. Thank you to the members of the City Council who support Nicholsville and our tiny house village community. Please, nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight, Chris. And Colleen, I see you are unmuted. Please go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Are we on?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Well, I'm Colleen McAller, homeowner in D4 and representing our community council of 2,400 members, which supports the inclusion of Form B in the 2021 budget that's proposed by Councilmember Peterson. It's a statement of legislation intent that provides the tracking for the response times of the 911 police emergency calls in 2021. It provides lifesaving and timely public response, and that's the primary responsibility of the city. 911 is the number people call in their most dire need. For example, if an active shooter bursts into a nearby daycare and threatens to harm the children, or if an individual is holding up a shopkeeper, you call 911. And each second of that response time seems like hours. With the proposed changes to the SPD structure and its reduced budget, there may be changes in the response times. And some of those slower response times may affect the wealthiest, most valuable, vulnerable populations of our city, BIPOC, community, youth, and seniors. So we urge you to include Form B in the 2021 budget to enable the city to capture the data and provide the resources to respond to those critical 911 calls. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. And Andrew Bennett, followed by Ingrid Archibald. Hi, Andrew.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much and thank you to everyone for providing this forum. This is the first time I've ever called into something like this. And I'm calling in for two reasons. One is to echo the support of the previous caller for Form B from Councilman Peterson around ensuring that we track and protect 911 call times for our most at-risk citizens here in the city of Seattle who need help. The second is to just share a personal anecdote that is a result of the policies of the City Council and the votes that have happened recently around getting rid of the navigation teams. I live in proximity to Ravenna Boulevard in a residential neighborhood. I am a homeowner in District Four and our area is heavily residential, children in most of the homes in our area. And one block north of us and one block south of us, there were recently abandoned encampments. There was probably 100-plus needles, of which I've documented and can share photographs of, that were in the median, in the middle of the road and uncleaned up for a period of days, if not longer, in which any child or resident could easily have stepped on or gotten stuck. The macro point there is that we, as a city, have got to do better and come up with more holistic ways to protect all of our citizens, not only those who are at need, who need mental health or substance abuse training, but also our citizens who are living and also trying to deal with these problems. And the city at this point doesn't seem to have a- the City Council doesn't seem to have a thoughtful response, other than get rid of the navigation teams. And my personal experience here again is that it's-
Thank you very much for your time. And Ingrid Archibald, good evening.
Hi, councilmembers. My name is Ingrid Archibald. I'm a renter in District Six. I'm also a volunteer with Sunrise Seattle and I work for an advocacy organization called Stand Out There. Stand is one of the over 150 organizations who have signed on in support of this council passing a solidarity budget this year. I urge you to amend Mayor Durkin's proposed budget to reflect the demands of the solidarity budget. I urge you to divest from SPD by at least 50%, reinvest in BIPOC communities, and fund critical programs, including COVID relief, affordable housing, and Green New Deal programs. By passing a 2021 budget that helps heal historical systemic wrongs and centers community care over violence and harm, Seattle can prove what's possible. This council has an incredible opportunity to set an example for cities across Washington and the rest of the country. I urge you to pass a solidarity budget that is truly progressive, addresses the needs of our communities, and honors Black lives. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time tonight, Ingrid. Okay, folks, we are at number 170. There's about 50 more people left to go and quite a few people that have signed up replied comments that are not present. I'm gonna read your names as we go, so if you do dial in, we will go back to you. But I am asking people, if you hear your name right now, please call in so that we don't have to toggle back and forth. The following seven people are not present. Anna Ramji, Allison Eisenmeyer, Ari Hertz, Kendall Gregory, Ruby Holland, Michael Nimberg, and BJ Last. Those are between numbers 170 and 177. Let's go to Brian McMullin, Joshua Ryder, and Shazzy Vaughn, who are present with us. Thanks for being here. Brian, please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Brian McMullin. I'm a homeowner within Councilmember Peterson's District Number Four and also on our local community council. Similar to what one of the previous callers mentioned, I think we need to understand the impact of changes being proposed. So I wanted to say I support Councilmember Peterson's Form B budget request, calling for the review of impacts that these changes will have on 911 response times and also closure of various calls by the police. So I think we need this statement of legislative intent to get the basic report data that can be provided so we can quantify any material impacts these changes are being proposed. In addition, I support implementing better controls on the overtime for Seattle police, which has led to out-of-line payrolls for certain police officers. And finally, I think we need to have zero tolerance for any racist behavior on the SPD. I think the union has had a reputation of being able to protect bad apples in their midst. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. The next person present is Joshua Ryder. Good evening, Joshua.
Hey there. My name is Josh Ryder and I'm a renter in District Six. The 2021 budget has an opportunity to pursue anti-racist policies. And I urge the council, especially Councilmember Downstrauss, to include the following specific items in the budget for next year, many of which are stated in the Solidarity and the People's Budget. Defunding SPD by $200 million, allocating those funds to social services, housing, education for our BIPOC communities, not from the Jump Start Seattle Funds, adhering to participatory budgeting, with BIPOC community members given multiple seats at every point in the decision-making process, and funding the Africa Town Yessler Housing Project. I feel that appealing to hearts and minds only does so much. We need anti-racist policies, policymakers, and budgets in Seattle if we are sincere in our pursuit to be an anti-racist and city-oriented on equality. Thank you so much. I really appreciate y'all taking the time to hear us constituents tonight. Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you very much for dialing in tonight. And Shazzy Vaughn. Good evening, Shazzy.
Good evening. My name is Shazzy and I'm a resident of District Seven. I am calling in support of the Shama Sawant Solidarity Budget and the People's Budget. I am asking the City Council to keep their promise and please defund SPD by at least 50% and divert those funds to communities of color. This money could be better spent on public health, COVID relief, transportation, and affordable housing for all. Black Lives Matter. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks for waiting on the line tonight. The next three people are Annalise Stetser-Terman, Michael Biggs, and Brady Nordstrom. Good evening, Annalise. I see you unmuted on my end. If you wanted to just double check-
Oh, okay.
Hi, great. Hi.
Hi, my name is Annalise Stelzer-Termanello. I'm a resident of District Seven. I am calling on behalf of my nonprofit organization, For All, that is based in Seattle. And I'm calling in support of the Black Lives Matter and Solidarity Budget and I was- and I'm coming through outreach efforts from 350 Seattle. I'm calling to urge you to divest from SPD by at least 50% and support distribution of funds divested from SPD through a participatory budget process. I urge you to extend the police hiring freeze into 2020. As police quit or retire, we don't need more investments to replace them. I'm asking you to make sure that investments in Black communities and community-led health and safety come from funds divested from police, prosecutors, and courts, not from Jump Start Seattle Funds or any other city funds. The 2021 budget can put Seattle on the path to addressing anti-Black racism and an equitable recovery from the intersecting crisis of COVID-19, economic justice, and climate change. We will not let community needs be pitted against each other.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Annalise. Michael, good evening. Hi, Michael.
Hello. I'm calling in to strongly support Alex Peterson's request for a report on 911 response times, given the defunding of the Seattle Police Department. I want to tell you that my household has directly benefited from the professionalism of the Seattle Police Department's response to a 911 domestic violence situation. The police got here within five minutes of the 911 call being placed. Their interactions with all of the principals were polite but firm. They were impartial, thorough, and probing, and their actions were clearly grounded in long-experienced professionalism and the authority to enforce their best judgment. At the end of the incident, I was left with a profound sense of appreciation that I lived in a city with a police force that put highly competent officers onto the streets and was able to dispatch them to emergencies efficiently. My respect for my city and its police department soared. I hate to think what might have happened, what might have been the outcome of that incident if the police had been delayed or if a team of social workers had been dispatched to my house, who would have been absolutely unequipped, unqualified, and unauthorized to the-
Thank you for your time tonight. And Brady Nordstrom, good evening.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Brady Nordstrom and I'm with the Housing Coalition Seattle for Everyone. We would like to urge you to support two related comprehensive plan provisos in the 2021 budget. One has to do with community engagement for the Racial Equity Toolkit analysis and the other for an EIS alternative, providing additional housing capacity and diversity in single-family areas. These relatively low-cost provisos were included before the 2020 emergency budget rebalancing. And now that the funds are available again, they should be re-added. The city's long-term planning priorities and commitment to identify and implement remedies to ongoing racial discrimination and underinvestment in BIPOC communities have not changed. The status quo of land use has not increased housing equity or controlled housing costs. And data suggests that this is driven in large part by artificial restrictions to increase housing capacity and diversity in certain neighborhoods and area zones, single-family. We now have the chance to prioritize community voice in our future land use decisions and study housing alternatives that can increase equity while allowing Seattle to grow adequately. Failure to study such options may lead to missed opportunities in the repetition of past harms. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for calling in tonight. And the next three speakers are going to be Michael Nimberg, Jessica Dixon, and Smitty Buckler. Before Michael speaks, just a quick note that we also have Emily Martin, Bea Lancome, Thomas Carroll, and Melody Zahn listed as up next to speak and not present. So if you just heard your name called, please do note that we will get to you when you dial in. Michael Nimberg, please go ahead.
Good evening. This is Michael Nimberg and I am the Executive Director of the Hepatitis Education Project. I am also a co-chair of Just Access to Health, or JA, which evolved out of the Heroin and Prescription Opioid Task Force. Just Access to Health recently sent each of you 17 recommendations drafted to create a safer and healthier community. And tonight, we want to continue to advocate for specific recommendations that have been advanced as budget actions by members of the council. First, we strongly support Councilmember Morales's vision for the HOPE program. And we also support the proposed expansion of the Purple Bag Program. We support Councilmember Herbold's budget action to advance critical programming to increase drug user health and address drug overdoses, including safer consumption services. This council has been a champion of this intervention and we need one last action for transmitting these funds to Public Health Contract. The $1.4 million has sat unspent with drug user health in crisis. The time for finally releasing those dollars is now. We also support Councilmember Herbold's budget action to fund important social service agencies, such as the People's Harm Redo-
Thank you very much. And the next person is Jessica Dixon. Hi, Jessica. Star six unmute. After Jessica, we are going to hear from Smitty Buckler. Then we'll go to Andrea Carnes. And back to Jenny Price and Michael Witzwong. So Jessica, we see you on the line. We just see you still listed as muted. Star six- So Jessica, we see you on the line. We just see you still listed as muted. Star six unmute. Okay. Let's go on to Smitty and we'll come back to Jessica. Jessica, if you can hear us, just star six unmute and we'll come back to you. Hello, Smitty. You are up next. Star six as well. Smitty, can you hear me? Okay. And after Smitty, we're going to go to Andrea Carnes. Smitty, star six unmute. Great. We will come back to you as well. Okay, folks, let's go ahead and have Andrea tee'd up. Hi, Andrea. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andrea Carnes and I'm the Deputy Director at Plymouth Housing. I've worked in Seattle's housing organization for the last 20-plus years. And I joined Jamia Stevens and Carrie Cooley Strong, who spoke earlier in the testimony, in support of the Social Services Provider Academy at Seattle Central College. It's no secret that our local supportive housing and service providers are experiencing a significant gap in the ability to recruit and retain employees at all levels. Mid-level and leadership positions are disproportionately held by white people, including myself, while entry-level frontline staff are more representative of the communities in which they work and the clients they serve. Upward mobility for frontline staff is often inhibited by the need for education. It's past time for our city to invest in opportunities like the Social Services Provider Academy. This program is designed to break through the individual barriers and structural racism within our education system and provide a pathway for career development. I am grateful to the council for strongly supporting the Jump Start Initiative to increase supportive housing. Our supportive housing organizations are being asked to quickly grow to meet the needs. We must be developing and expanding the workforce to carry out this mission. I want to thank Councilmembers Herbold and Gonzalez for including this request in the budget, and I encourage.
Andrea, thanks for being with us today. We're going to go back to Jessica Dixon and Smitty Buckler, and that will be followed by Jenny Price and Michael Witzwong. Jessica, can you hear me now? Perfect.
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent. Yes, thanks so much.
Hi, my name is Jessica Dixon. I'm a 30-year resident of District Six and a board member of Plan Amnesty. Our urban forest supports the health of our city and its inhabitants. Seattle's trees contribute to cleaner air and water, support wildlife, and bird.
Jessica, it looks like you got dropped, so we'll let you back in and we will try to hear the rest of your testimony. If you can hear me, go ahead and call back in. We'll get you in the queue, okay? Smitty, please go ahead. Let's try and get you unmuted as well again. Star six unmute yourself. Smitty, can you hear me? Star six to unmute. Okay, there you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for doing that.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Smitty Buckler and I'm a resident of District One. Originally from Eastern Washington, I've lived on the side of the mountains for over 20 years and also my adult life. I'm calling as founder of Rad Care, an intersectional organization led by queer, trans, black, and Indigenous people of color who are also disabled. We are working directly with individuals within intersectional populations experiencing homelessness, mental health, and drug complications. We support the Solidarity Budget because it makes sense. Some specific budget items that are super important to us are handwashing and clean water stations, Purple Bags, tiny houses and other shelter funding, specifically nonreligious organizations that serve marginalized populations that can't access the current shelter systems because, for instance, they are trans women of color. Reallocation of these funds towards community-based nonprofits working directly with Indigenous franchise populations such as DASD, Chief Seattle, Rad Care, and other direct-service organizations that have been named here tonight. Stop sweeps, safer injection sites, strange exchange programs. We urge you to divest from SPD by 100% or at minimum 50% in support of distribution of funds divested through a participatory budget process led by those most impacted by police violence, namely Black Indigenous, trans, and/or queer individuals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And after Smitty, we have Jenny Price and Michael Witzwong, and we'll go back to Jessica in just a second. Jenny? Good evening. Just star six unmute yourself. Perfect. Hi there.
Hi, my name is Jenny Price and I'm a renter in District Four. I'm also a member of Sunrise Movement Seattle. And I'm also calling to add my support for the demands of the Solidarity Budget. So I urge you to divest from SPD by at least 50% and redistribute those funds through a participatory budgeting process. Instead of wasting our money and resources on criminalizing poverty and mental health struggles, we should invest that money in meeting people's basic needs. We can create real public safety, not through overfunding the police, but by funding safe housing, healthcare, and public transit, among others. I urge you to extend the police hiring freeze into 2021 as part of the process of defunding SPD as well. Thank you for sticking around this long to hear all of us and you of my time.
Thank you for calling in. Michael, good evening. And then we'll go to Jessica. Hi, Michael. Just star six unmute yourself. Great. Hi, Michael.
Hi, my name is Michael. I'm a member of social affirmative, a supporter of the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget. And, you know, I have protested all summer for justice for George Floyd. You know, and I am asking the City Council to stand against Mayor Durkin's austerity budget. It's absolutely shameful to cut so much money from our community and our services when the police budget goes untouched. It's clear what the people of Seattle have asked for. We've asked for a 50% defunding of the police budget. We need that money for libraries, for affordable housing, for parks and community centers. And right now, the mayor's budget, it's a police budget. It's a poverty budget. It's a budget that, if approved, is going to show that you don't listen to Black Lives Matter. You don't listen to the people of Seattle. And that you would rather fund tear gas than books than parks. You know, and this is not what the people of Seattle need in this moment. We need to tax big business further to fund affordable housing. We need to cut the police budget to fund affordable housing in a Green New Deal. The crises facing working people are manifold, and the funding for fighting these crises comes from the top 1%. And it comes from cutting the police budget. So you've got.
Thank you for calling in tonight. Okay, Jessica, we're coming back to you. We lost you at the most inopportune time. You were just getting into your public testimony, so we're gonna ask you to push star six to unmute and we'll give you your time back. And then I just want to note, as Jessica is pushing star six to unmute, Jessica, I still see you listed as muted on my end. The following people are also listed as not present over here. Emily Martin, Bea Lancome, Thomas Carroll, Melanie Zahn, Jason Smith, TKT, Aaron Rantz, Delia Weisner, Janet Guillen, Zoe Ammer, and and Post. Okay, so if you just heard your name read, we are now past your number, but if you would like to dial back in, you are welcome to, and we will try and get you. Jessica, I see you listed as unmuted. Let's do this again.
Yay. Great. Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jessica Dixon. I am a 30-year resident of D6 and a board member of Plan Amnesty. Our urban forest supports the health of our city and its inhabitants. Seattle's trees contribute to cleaner air and water, support wildlife and birds, and mitigate extreme temperatures. It's critically important that the city passes an updated tree ordinance that protects and enhances our urban forest. I support a proviso directing the Seattle DCI to complete the new and stronger tree ordinance required by Resolution 31902. The proviso directs that the executive deliver an updated ordinance to the council before it can spend the last one-third of SDCI's policy offices budget for 2021. In addition, the City of Seattle needs to get serious about how we manage our urban forest moving into the future. I support the directive put forward by Councilmember Pedersen that would require a plan to potentially transfer and consolidate all tree management authority to OSCE and be submitted to the council by September of 2021. Thank you.
Thanks again for calling back in. All right, we are now at number 198, and that includes Heather Worthley, Michael Gill, and Esther Kemball. We have you all listed to speak next and are present. Folks, if you've signed up to provide public testimony and are not on our testimony line, it's time to get on because we're getting close to the end here. So again, we are at number 198. Heather, thanks so much.
Good evening. Heather Worthley, Executive Director of Port Jobs, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Testifying tonight to respectfully request that you restore funding for Port Jobs workforce development in the amount of $50,000, which was cut from the Office of Economic Development in the mayor's budget. Port Jobs is one of the only organizations currently providing in-person services, including internet and computer access to the more than 50% BIPOC refugee and immigrant community of airport workers at C-TAC. 20% of Port Jobs' customers are City of Seattle residents. More than 40% are Black. Port Jobs provides career advancement pathways to aviation maintenance technology and other still-in-demand certificates. We're hosting healthcare enrollment fairs at the airport in person with multiple languages supported for those losing coverage due to layoffs. City funding is critical to continue these essential services as our communities reel from pandemic-induced job changes. Now more than ever, Port Jobs has been a lifeline for hundreds of workers and their families. Please restore Port Jobs funding to support our community recovery through essential workforce support. Thank you very much for your service and your time.
Thanks for calling in tonight. Michael Gill, you are up next.
Hi. My name is Michael Gill. I'm a renter in District Two and a currently out-of-work nightlife music industry worker and contractor. I'm speaking tonight in support of retaining the nightlife business advocate position. The mayor's 2021 budget proposes eliminating that position completely. This position services venues, bars, restaurants, and provides really, really important communication on safety, licensing, regulations, and general community involvement. This isn't a time that we're able to restart this hard-won relationship with these small businesses and the city and have to reestablish that line of communication. The nightlife business advocates' universal communication is so valuable, and it's crucial for safe and financial possible recovery from this pandemic. This is one position that creates essential resources for hundreds of small businesses and provides thousands of jobs. Saving this single position will save businesses jobs and improve our ability to be resourceful to our future communities and create new conversation in equity and sustainability economically and provide more resources for our communities.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And Esther Kemball, you are up next. Esther will be followed by Jermaine Williams, Jessie Rollins, and Judge Ewing. Jude Ewing. My apologies, Jude. Esther, good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for asking.
Hi, I am a resident of District Three and I'm calling, along with so many other people, to support the Solidarity Budget and the defunding of SPD by at least 50% and reinvestment of these funds in the Black community because Black Lives Matter. And the funds should not come from Jump Start. I live within a few blocks of Cal Anderson Park, and I witnessed the violence of SPD against peaceful protesters and the damage done to local residents, even people who had nothing to do with the protests by tear gas and flashbangs. I do not feel like the police protect me or my neighborhood, and they are an active danger to communities of color and our homeless community. I do not feel threatened by homeless encampments, but I feel threatened by unaccountable police. I especially want to express my support for the HOPE proposal and to replace the navigation team with a new model that works with and not against the homeless community. Sweeps don't get people into housing. They just move people around and make it harder for them to access services. And the CDC has recommended against sweeping encampments during pandemics. Please also fund street syncs, the Purple Bag Scheme, more tiny house villages, maintain funding for the Share Wheel 24-hour shelters.
Please do send in the rest of your testimony. Thanks for dialing in tonight. Jermaine Williams, you are up next. Good evening.
Hey, good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. Today, it's been a long evening. You've been doing a phenomenal job. So, good evening. My name is Jermaine Williams. I am a community researcher with the Black Brilliance Project, also representing Freedom Project of Washington. I'm also a long-term resident of District One and a father of children who live in High Point, West Seattle. I stand with King County Equity Now in support of the Solidarity Budget and defunding Seattle Police Department by 100%. I don't want my children traumatized by witnessing police brutality, nor suffering a lesser education, lack of mental health care and/or medical care, or suffering shorter life expectancy because of their zip code, tax bracket, or the color of their skin. I ask that we divest in policing and reinvest in community. We are unapologetically Black, unapologetically beautiful, and unapologetically brilliant. Black lives and souls definitely matter. Again, I thank you for your time, and I stand with King County Equity Now. And I ask that we defund and divest from the Seattle Police Department and reinvest in communities, particularly Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Thank you all for your time.
And thank you very much for your comments and for your testimony tonight. Jessie, good evening. Thanks for being with us.
Good evening, Budget Chair. Can you hear me?
Sure, Cam. Thanks for checking.
Awesome. Good evening, Councilmembers. Thanks for sticking it out with us tonight. My name is Jessie Rollins. I'm the Public Policy Manager of the Public Defender Association. At PDA, we have several staff that participate in a group called Just Access to Health. And on behalf of PDA and Just Access to Health, we stand in solidarity with imagining new public safety as local drug policies are a core component to any public safety planning. So we urge that you include your user health as a key priority for any budget deliberations. We recently sent you 17 recommendations, and tonight I want to highlight three. First, I want to ask for everyone's support for Councilmember Herbold's budget action to advance critical programming for supervised and safer consumption services. In addition, I want to ask for support for Councilmember Morales's budget action for funding a study on human service wage inequities. Lastly, I also want to ask for support for Councilmember Herbold's budget action to add funding to important social service agencies, such as Hepatitis Education Project or Commons and Reach. And I also want to.
Shoot, Jessie, I think we lost the last item there, so if you could email all of us, that would be great, too. Thank you for waiting on the line tonight. Okay, I'm going to read a list of names that are up next that are listed as not present. Judy Lightfoot, Shawna McCain, Peter Fink, Melody Owen, Maureen Scruggs, and Janet Van Fleet. If you've heard your name and are still able to testify, you can still call in and we'll try and get you, but we have passed your number. That brings us to Jude Ewing, Bruno George, and Catherine Burke. Good evening, Jude. Jude, you are number 207 for folks following along with us. And Jude, just push star six one more time to unmute yourself. Okay, Jude, if you can hear me, star six, great. I see you're unmuted. Yes, thank you, it worked.
Okay, all right, so um, thank you. I'm a resident of District Five and wish to thank all councilmembers for their long hours working towards a better Seattle, and especially Councilwoman Deborah Juarez for all she has done and tried to do for our district. I'm the president of Lake City House, a Seattle Housing Authority low-income building for the last four years. An advocate for low-income residents, homeless, seniors, seen and unseen disabilities, uh, mental health, human beings, including advocating 1,000% for Black Lives Matter, people of color. I'm also a member of the Build Lake City Together and Lake City Neighborhood Alliance, the only actual low-income resident representing advocacy for the greater Lake City area. I've been through the system from transitional housing to permanent housing. I believe we definitely need an actual low-income resident and a Black Lives Matter advocate on the mayor's budget committee. Because if you haven't lived it, you can't possibly really know what it, what is needed. I also.
Shoot, I'm sorry that we didn't get the last sentence in there. Um, please do send us your message as well. Uh, let's see, we have next Bruno George. Good evening, Bruno.
Hello, my name is Bruno George. I, for now, I'm a renter in District Three. But when pandemic unemployment assistance ends at the end of December, and the eviction moratorium also ends at the end of December, I might well become homeless at some point in 2021, along with thousands of other people in Seattle. So I'm calling to support the solidarity budget, including investment in BIPOC communities, and especially support for tent cities, tiny house villages, uh, the SCOTF law mitigation team that supports homeless people who live in their cars, and genuinely affordable housing that's democratically run. I yield the rest of my time, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much for calling in tonight. Okay, folks, we are getting near the end because there's a handful of folks who are not present. I'm gonna list those who are next to speak, and then I'm gonna list the names of people who are also signed up but are not present. So uh, the next person that we have is Janet Van Fleet, followed by Catherine Burke, Howard Gale, and then Whitney Khan. Okay, um, the people that we have listed as not present include Steve Zemke, um, uh, Mary Ann Scruggs, Pablo, Pablo Shurkanovsky, Michael Oxman, Marlee Fuller, Chris Lehman, Michelle Lucas, Anthony Powers, and um, Kudama Mohammed. So if you are interested in speaking and just heard your name, you still have a few minutes to dial in. We have these last four speakers who are present and looking forward to hearing from you all. Janet, please go ahead. You are up next.
Hello, this is Janet Van Fleet from District Three. Um, I'm calling in support of 24/7 funding for the Share and Wheel um shelters and for more encampments and tiny houses like Nicholsville and Tent City Three. And um, uh, I just want to echo the statements of the numerous people from um, the Share Wheel shelters and tent cities who have spoken and tiny house villages. Um, shelter saves lives, and shelter planned and run by the people needing and using it, like Share and Wheel, Nicholsville, and Tent City Three, are what we need to restore the humanity of all of us. Um, likewise, uh, policing planned and run, planned and run by Black and Indigenous people as the African People Socialist Party calls for, is um, what I hope to see in addition to the redirecting of funds from SPD and the court system to um, the participatory budget efforts.
Excellent, thank you so much. Catherine Burke, you are up next. Good evening.
Uh, good evening, my name is Catherine Burke. I'm a resident of District Four. I'm calling in to request a report on 911 response times. Right now, because of personnel losses and the SPD, there have been huge lags in response times to crime in our neighborhoods. The increased crime rates are hitting small local businesses especially hard. We need better response times now more than ever to support our local businesses, many which are minority-owned, that have been hit especially hard by the pandemic and ongoing challenges. Please support the request to study response times. Please support Councilman Pederson's Form B. Thanks very much for listening late into the night for all of this testimony tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for staying on the phone late into the night. Howard Gale is next, followed by Whitney Khan.
Hi, good evening, it's Howard Gale, Lower Quinian, District Seven. Um, I'm shocked that Councilmember Suwan's proposal on establishing an independent and community-based police oversight board has not been supported by any other councilmember. Suwan's proposal would start the discussion on ending our current failed accountability system and move us toward an independent and community-based police oversight system, such as that which Newark, New Jersey, and Nashville, Tennessee have already instituted. If you believe in the righteousness of the moment we are in, if you believe in justice for George Floyd, then how can you not believe in justice for Charlena Lyles, Kyle Gray, Jason Severs, Iosio Falatogo, Danny Rodriguez, Ryan Smith, Sean Lee Fer, and Perry Caver, all killed by Seattle Police and never properly investigated in the three years that our accountability system has been quote "working" unquote. Councilmembers, please, if you do not support Councilmember Suwan's proposal, you must tell us what measure of justice and comfort our existing accountability system has brought to the families and loved ones of Charlena Lyles, Kyle Gray, Jason Severs, Iosio Falatogo, Danny Rodriguez, Brian Smith, Sean Lee Fer, Terry Caver, and the 19 others killed by Seattle Police since the murder of John T. Williams. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. And the last person that I see who is present is Whitney Khan. Whitney, thanks for being on the line with us. Just star six to unmute yourself, great.
Hi, yeah, I definitely agree with the last speaker and with most of the speakers tonight. I think everyone's been quite clear, overwhelmingly so. My name's Whitney. I'm a parent educator at Rainier Beach High School, and the Seattle Education Association has voted to endorse cutting the SPD budget by 50% this year and investing in BIPOC communities instead. Educators are watching what you're doing next. This is the civil rights movement of our time, and these could easily be the most important votes of your life. Make them count. Remember what you felt when you promised to put 50% of the SPD budget into BIPOC community-controlled alternatives. And I want you to cap off this unexpected year with the most unexpected action. Be politicians who keep their promises. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Before we go, folks, um, I wanna make sure Ruby Holland, we had you listed as duplicate, um, but it says you weren't present earlier. Just wanna double-check to see if Ruby is still present with us. I know Anitra handed her microphone off to someone else earlier, too, and wanna see if Anitra was interested in using her time tonight. If we could cue those two up, and then just as we're doing that, um, quick last check to make sure that those who are listed as duplicates, um, who might not have been listed as present prior, still get the chance to speak tonight. Uh, so, uh, folks can bear with me for one second as we double-check that um, to see if Ruby or Anitra, and then anybody else who is not, was listed as not present, and then on the latter part of this list was listed as duplicate. Just wanted to get confirmation before we go. Thanks for hanging in there, folks. Okay, I am not seeing any of those lines popping onto the screen. It's been a long evening, it's 10:12 PM, and without any additional folks listed as present to speak, I wanna thank everybody for your time tonight. There was a hun- 231 people signed up for public testimony. We greatly appreciate everybody who called and provided comments. Please do send us your message at, to council@seattle.gov if you didn't get a chance to get through all of your comments, or if you didn't get a chance to speak tonight um, because of other obligations. And I hope you all join me in thanking Seattle Channel, IIT Communications, our clerks' offices, uh, folks in my office, Frida Cuevas, uh, for helping to manage this and our communications team as well. If I left anybody out, you're the best. We will see you all bright and early in less than 12 hours at our Budget Committee, starting at 9:30 AM. If you wanna provide public comment, we will again start with the first 30 minutes of public comment. Public comment link opens up at 7:30 AM. So we can't uh wait to hear from you again. Thanks, everybody, have a great night. The public hearing for the Select Budget Committee is adjourned. Have a good evening, thanks to you all. I see you all on there and really appreciate you sticking with us tonight. Thank you. Take care, everyone.